Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally-owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Co-location, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Okay, I'm gonna get, I'll get started and then we'll move back on over to, okay. Okay, we'll get started and. Welcome. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our July 13, 2020 Select Board Meeting. This evening, we are going to move from open session into executive session, and then we will adjourn and then move back into open session once we have taken care of the items that we need to. As Chair, I note that not to move into executive session could place the town in a difficult position as we go forward. And the two items we will be discussing are Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, Department of Public Works Negotiation Settlement for FY21, and Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, Discuss Liberty Green Appeal by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So if we can, as a reminder, every vote tonight is a roll call vote. So if I have a motion for, that's my motion for executive session, do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Brown, and then by roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Will be adjourning now and returning at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Executive session, we're now going back into open session, and I will read some of the instructions that I have read each week while we've been having our remote Select Board meetings. So as a preliminary matter, I will just confirm one more time for the record, the members and staff who are present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Doug Brown?
Here.
Doug Brown. Jones?
Jones, here.
Sam Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And just in time, Nancy Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Good job getting back and forth. It's, it can be tricky. We also have Julian Suso and Peter Johnson Staub here for staff, as well as all the folks in IT who are assisting, and other individuals who will join us as the meeting goes on. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth because of the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order allows the public, excuse me, public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This order does not require public participation, except for certain regulatory hearings which require public hearing. At the discretion of the Chair, a method for public participation may be provided for matters that do not require under this order. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom app. The meeting is also being broadcast on cable, Channel 15, and streamlined at FCTV.org. For those who wish to view the meeting but not participate, we suggest viewing it on FCTV. Members of the public who wish to make comments or ask questions during the meeting may join the Zoom meeting as attendees, which allows you to submit written comments and questions via the chat function, and also to see and hear the meeting in real time. Please note, there is a time lag between the real-time Zoom online meeting and the FCTV video, whether viewed on cable or streamed online. The link and instructions for joining the meeting are listed in the agenda, just posted on the Town website. For more detailed instructions on how to use the chat function, please go to the Town website and enter Zoom instructions in the search box at the top of the page. This meeting is being recorded, and some individuals who have been invited to make a presentation are also participating by video conference. For those of us participating by Zoom as panelists on the video conference, please be aware that you can be seen or heard unless you mute your microphone or close out your, your visual, the recording part, the camera, excuse me. Panelists are asked to mute their mics except when speaking and attempt to minimize background noise when you are speaking. Also be advised, open windows on your computer could be broadcast and recorded if you hit the share, screen share button on your computer. Anything captured by this Zoom teleconference will be broadcast and recorded. All the supporting meeting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available at the Town's website unless otherwise noted. For this meeting, the meeting packet can be found at the Select Board page by clicking on the Select Board's meeting packet, which is a tab on the menu bar on the left. Okay, we're now turning to first, gonna turn to the first items on the agenda. Before we do so, just let me cover a couple of quick ground rules. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. Please remember to unmute your microphone and face the microphone when you are speaking so you can be heard clearly. Please remember to mute your mic on the Zoom app when you're not speaking, or if using a mobile phone, mute your phone when not speaking. When a meeting participant wishes to interject, a comment, or a question, please state your name and ask to be recognized. After the presentation and member discussion, I will ask staff member to read any questions or comments typed into the Zoom chat by members of the public. All votes for this remote meeting will be taken via roll call, and I will call out your name, and each member will repeat your last name before stating your vote. So again, for folks who are watching, if you have a comment, please go ahead. When we get to that section in the agenda, let us know what your comment is. As we're getting ready to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, if you have something that you want to be read out during public comment, where we can't respond to you, but you want us to read it, you may go ahead and type that into the chat function, and just please note that you'd like it to be read during public comment period. Otherwise, if everyone would please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Okay, anything for recognition, Mr. Brown?
I don't have anything specifically for Falmouth, but it occurred to me that this week I saw a news story about the nationwide pandemic and the number of doctors that are pushed into the situation, almost like a military situation, of triaging, choosing the people that will get the higher level of service and pushing the others aside. And that's a really tough thing that they're doing. I really hope that we don't have to deal with that again, but it's just a real, it's a heart-wrenching situation, I'm sure, for them, and it just broke my heart to see them going through it. It's just gotta be so emotional and so distressing. I would like to recognize that.
Thank you, Doug. Good point. Sam?
Yes, and along those same lines, I'd like to recognize the efforts of the residents of Falmouth. We've managed to keep our infection rate to a very low level, less than 10, I think it's less than five most of the time. Scott McGann just reported again on where we stand this past Friday, and that's because residents of Falmouth have taken seriously the need to wear masks, to look out for each other, and recognize that, you know, as Doug is pointing out, people are in serious condition. And if we practice those measures of limiting the spread, we can help all of us out. So I want to just recognize the efforts of the residents of this town. We've had an awful lot of out-of-town visitors come in, and of course, we've seen some flagrant miss, you know, lack of practicing those good measures. But I think at least the Falmouth residents are doing what they need to, and it's some comfort to me, because I'm definitely in the older category.
Thank you. Great point. One other thing, and I know that if she were present, she would point out that it's not just her, but a cadre of really incredible volunteers. But Penny Doobie and the folks that primarily, mostly women across the Cape who are working to make masks, they have made some for other Town staff, and actually, Vips just asked them to make 600 masks for the schools, for some students and staff, and they're going to fill that order. She just wanted to, she wrote to me this week to confirm that it was something that the Superintendent's Office was on board with, and Superintendent Duer said absolutely, obviously Vips, and she had spoken. But this is just one of those examples of what a special place we are. I mean, these are individuals who are donating their time, they're donating material, and they are making just enormous, turning out, you know, enormous numbers of masks that we know our students and our staff are going to need in the fall, however we end up back at school. And so, just an enormous, just thanks to all of those folks, to Penny and everyone else she's helping to organize. Hopefully, we can maybe thank them properly later on by having them come on and just tell us a little bit about how they were able to mobilize so many individuals in such a short period of time. So really great work.
Additionally, Madam Chair, there are pockets of individuals who are also making masks, which I think is really just amazing. They seem to be popping up all over the place, and I think their efforts should be applauded. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements? No? Okay. Okay, is there any, let me just see, any public comment that, I don't see any, I don't see anything in the chat, okay? If someone hasn't had a chance to do it, if Peter, if you would just let me know if something comes up as we're moving forward. Okay, vote to affirm appointment of Fleet Services Manager, Mr. Suso, do you want to walk us through this? And I think that Mr. Rivera is with us, so if we could promote Edwin Rivera, that would be wonderful. And I'll have you start, Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam. As you noted, this evening, I'm recommending that Mr. Edwin Rivera be an appointment as Fleet Services Manager for the Town of Falmouth. Mr. Rivera has come strongly recommended through a competitive search and selection process here in the town, and he was one of, among many, a number of candidates for the job. The past seven years, he has served as Maintenance Supervisor for the Bourne Highway Department, and we're delighted that Mr. Rivera also lives in T-Ticket. So I strongly recommend the Board's consideration, and we're pleased that Mr. Rivera can also be with us here this evening. Should the Board have questions, or you may wish to comment? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Rivera. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you for having me tonight.
And we took a look, obviously, in our packet, we had your resume, and then just a list of, really impressive list of all of the work that you've done. And I second Mr. Suso's just highlighting the fact that, you know, a lot of times, we are, we're a small community, so talented folks, sometimes we, you know, look far and wide, and we don't always find those individuals right in our community. Maybe we, we don't always get a chance to look hard enough, but it's wonderful when folks from our own community are able to come forward and sort of take that next step into really being an important part of what makes this town so wonderful. So I don't know if you want to share a few words or thoughts with us?
Well, I'm very excited to be part of the Town of Falmouth. I've lived there all my life, 45 years, born here, raised here, right on Sandwich Road. Unfortunately, I've worked in Bourne for most of the time, so the opportunity to come back to Falmouth was awesome. So I am very excited.
That long commute to Bourne must have just killed you, right?
I've had enough of the bridges.
Yeah, exactly. Well, welcome. Really excited. And do you have any questions from the Board, or a motion?
Great that you're coming out of our Voc School as well. It's good to hear that you are a product of our school systems. So thank you very much. I really enjoyed being at the Voc School. I learned a lot from them, and they really gave me the push to do a trade that's, believe it or not, becoming a dying breed.
Very true.
You're a credit to the, to the upper Cape.
That's right. I read your resume, and it was very impressive. I saw that you worked for the Town of Bourne early on after school, and then did some other work, and I'm going back to the town, so that means you left on good terms, and I'm glad to hear that.
Well, thank you very much. I absolutely did. I always try to leave on good terms of whatever position I'm in.
Right. The way to go.
Thank you. Doug Jones, do you have your hand up?
To affirm the appointment and to not waive the residency requirement, which I don't think there is disposition of.
It's been a long time where that hasn't been a request. Do you have a second from Sam Patterson?
Yes, Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. By roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Congratulations, Mr. Rivera. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome on.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Looking to do wonderful things in the Town of Falmouth.
Thank you. Okay, great. On our next, for summary of actions, the last time I checked, I don't believe that we had anyone present for vote to approve application for a new Common Victoire License, RTP LLC DBA Lobos House of Pizza, 338 East Falmouth Highway. Mr. Johnson Staub, is that still the case?
It appears that, that I don't see the new applicant, Lobzang Perchin, on the call. The seller of the former business, Ed Ashbaugh, is on the call. I don't know if he necessarily was looking to speak, may, may just be watching. But certainly, Ed, if you do wish to speak, just send us a chat, and, and we'd be happy to bring you in.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? I know that normally we require for, for, you know, alcohol, change of managers. This is, it looks like everything is in order. This is a common victoire license.
It's really just, it's really just the change of ownership and name, because it was, there's two owners, one owns the North Falmouth and the Pecassett, and the East Falmouth, and another location are owned by a different group, so.
Yep. Great. Looks like they've checked all the box of what they need to do.
Yes. Probably didn't expect to need to be here.
I think Doug had moved approval.
I'd second that.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. By roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, under administrative orders, we have vote to accept donation from Thomas W. Irvin, M.D., in the amount of $500 to the Falmouth Police Department donation account. So certainly, very generous donation.
With approval with gratitude?
Thank you.
Taylor, second.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor? English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. We also have a vote to accept donation from Susan Lewis and Stephen Karas in the amount of $500 to the Falmouth Police Department donation account.
A move acceptance with gratitude?
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Great, thank you. By roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Next, vote to accept donation from Old Stone Dock Association in the amount of $510.30 to the Beach Department donation account for flower boxes at the LNT Mitchell Bathhouse.
A move approval with gratitude and recognition of how many years this has been going on. It's just another wonderful thing that the Old Stone Dock Association does for us.
Patterson, second.
Seeing, motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Acting as Trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, vote to authorize expenditure of up to $4,000 for consulting services to obtain state certification for newly constructed affordable housing units, vote to authorize expenditure of $2,500 to contract for monitoring agent services for 504C Palmer Ave. Mr. Johnson Staub, are you going to just take us through this?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So as the Board is aware, you are the trustees of the separate housing, it's really a trust organization with, that has the name Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and most of the funds are received from the Community Preservation Act. We have two administrative expenses that we are seeking your authority to expend. So these are funds that the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund has uncommitted in the, in the fund, in the account. And the first item is for $4,000 for consulting services, as, as the agenda notes. So this is related to the, the 10% that is frequently talked about with respect to 40B applications. And if the town were to reach that 10% target, we would have much greater control over the affordable housing projects that are approved within the town. And the, the process to get a unit that has actually been developed through the 40B regulations and constructed, there's actually quite a bit of documentation that's required to, to be gathered from the town and the Registry of Deeds and submitted to Mass Housing to get those units certified. So we are looking to work with a consultant. We have had significant progress on having new units constructed, and we're looking to work with a consultant to pull together all that documentation and submit the applications to Mass Housing.
Thank you, Peter. Nancy, and then Sam.
My question is, could this be done in-house? I'm, I'm curious, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but I'm curious as to why we would need consultants to do this.
Yeah, I, you know, if we, if we had some additional staff support, we could do it in-house. It's not so much the consulting expertise. There's, you know, there is some expertise that's needed in terms of, you know, reading and interpreting and understanding the documents and which documents are needed, but it's primarily the time is, is what we're short on.
Sam?
Yeah, yeah. By the way, the Community Preservation Committee met on Thursday. I zoomed in on that meeting. Can't say that I was there, but they voted unanimously to approve this. This is coming out of the non-CPA funds that are going into the fund. We have a few sources of independent funds that get contributed to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, so this is coming out of the non-CPA funds portion. But just on the question of expertise, there are people that are doing this on a regular basis, and I think if you took a look at the overhead associated with some of our own staff labor, it probably would cost us more.
I would like to say that we've been talking about this for several years, and if it's not done now, that means we just haven't been able to get to it. So I would say we probably need to hire it out.
Any further discussion? Okay. Do I have an, does, do I have a motion to authorize?
I move as the Trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, the Board of Selectmen votes to authorize expenditure up to $4,000 for consulting services to obtain state certification for newly constructed affordable housing units, and to further authorize expenditure of $2,500 to contract for monitoring agent services for 504C Palmer Avenue.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? By roll call then, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, abstain.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. I am gonna take, if I can, just out of order, because Linda Clark, I know, is only available for a limited time tonight. She sent me a message earlier, and I do anticipate that some of the other matters that are before our business item number two are gonna maybe push us back beyond the time that she's available. So if we could promote Linda Clark so that we can talk about- So if we could promote Linda Clark so that we can talk about number two under business, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, vote to award $585,000 to the Falmouth Housing Corporation for Gifford Workforce Two project located at 591 Gifford Street. I see Linda coming on. Peter, did you just want to, as she's coming on, just let the board know what we're doing here, mostly for the public, to understand what we're doing here tonight?
Sure. So this is again the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, of which the select board are the trustees. And there are two phases, or I suppose three phases, to the Gifford Workforce Project. The Falmouth Housing Corp. is in the process of completing construction on 10 units of affordable rental housing. And they have, the board, acting as the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, has previously awarded $65,000 for this second Gifford workforce phase, which would be our typical subsidy for one unit. And the Falmouth Housing Corp. has been successful in securing additional funding sources from the state. So they're now ready to proceed and they're looking for the balance of the $65,000 per unit for the remaining nine units. And I would just, the main thing I think I'd need to emphasize is that we do not have sufficient funds on hand in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to award these funds today. The board can vote to authorize the requested funds, but they will have to be subject to town meeting appropriation. So when we can hold that town meeting, if town meeting is supportive of what the Community Preservation Committee has proposed to transfer to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund or appropriate to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, then we would have at that time sufficient funds to make this award. And I believe there is a concrete benefit to Falmouth Housing Corp. to having this vote of the board now, even though the funds are not available to be expended until that future date when town meeting is able to authorize the funding.
Nancy?
Madam Chair, and this is because we weren't able to take this up during our limited town meeting, correct?
Correct. It is an article. It is in, you know, it is on the warrant and, yes. And I know there had been some discussion about trying to take up a few of these type of articles. And then we, you know, really in the discussions, we just stuck to the budget. But certainly, and Linda can tell us where the project is at, but my understanding is if they're able to close in September, they'd be able to, you know, start and break ground in October, which was, is their goal. So that these would be ready for 2021 rather than a whole nother year. But obviously, a lot of that is going to depend on when we can hold town meeting. And that'll be a discussion that we have as time goes on and, you know, in view of, in light of what's happening with the pandemic. But Linda, do you just want to, since you're here, just let the board know and the public know, excuse me, where the project stands?
Yes. Currently, we have been awarded from the state. We have not got an official award document. We were verbally told that we have been awarded, which is great news. The awards usually come from Governor Baker, so he's been a little busy. So we have not got an official document. Although, as I said, we have been verbally told we have been awarded. With a delay in the project is going to cause some problems. We are shovel-ready at this point. We have, we're through our 40B process for Phase Two. We have our architectural plans prepared for Phase Two and we have replica of Phase One. Our septic system is in the ground for Phase Two. We were hoping to start this fall. If we have a delay in the project, we will be facing construction and material costs that will increase in the spring. We will not, we will not break ground in the middle of winter. It doesn't make any sense. Winter conditions are too expensive. We're looking probably at nine to 10-month construction period. So we, hopefully, if town meeting takes place and the funds are authorized and voted to move to the fund, our timeline will be okay. If this may happen in September. If it waits until November town meeting, we will have delays. We will not be able to break ground until the spring. So there are some hurdles here that we will be facing without the vote to transfer the funds into the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
Great, thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I sit on the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group and we had decided probably a year ago to only fund one unit because we didn't have the money to allocate. So this is, you know, assuming that town meeting goes ahead and recharges the fund as the article is proposed, we should be able to cover this 585,000 allocation. The other thing I want to mention is also on Thursday, the Community Preservation Committee voted to actually authorize this expenditure. And the way this special legislation is set up, we need that authorization from both the Community Preservation Committee and from the Board of, Select Board, excuse me. And so all of that is in place. And, you know, I think the working group felt that this truly was a shovel-ready project. And if we can do anything to go ahead and fund it, assuming that we get that state backing, we should be.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Any other comments from the board? Okay, what is the board's pleasure in terms of voting?
I move that we approve the allocation or authorization of $585,000 for the Phase Two Gifford Street workforce housing being developed by the Falmouth Housing Corp.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we include in that motion, subject to town meeting appropriation.
Okay. So so included. Is that okay with you, Sam?
Oh, excellent. I don't, I don't think the money would be there. I mean, it could, it just could be delayed until such time as the money was in the fund. But I have no problem with that amendment.
Great, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Vote by roll call. English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. Okay, returning back under administrative orders. Letter E, authorized project eligibility letter regarding 40B comprehensive permit application for Lewis Neck Road. Application proposes construction of four single-family, three-bedroom houses, all of which, four are proposed to be affordable. So if we can start, Peter, by just giving, I know we had a lot of background and I know the board has a lot of information on this, but essentially, especially for the public, if you could just give us a little background, Peter. And I know that we're going to want to hear from Frank Duffy and I believe that Karen Bissonette is also going, I saw her name in here. So if we could promote both Town Council and Ms. Bissonette, and we'll start with you, Peter.
Very good, thank you. So let me begin first with the correction to the agenda. The proposal is two, is for two units that are two-bedroom units and two units that are three-bedroom units.
Yeah.
With that, I would like to start with just a, you know, a brief summary of the process, what this is about. This is, the board is being asked to consider sending a comment letter to Mass Housing that is an opportunity for the town to provide input to both Mass Housing and formally to the Falmouth Housing Trust, which is a private, independent, nonprofit entity that develops affordable housing and is well-known in town. So that's what this agenda item is, is simply to authorize a comment letter. As is our standard practice, the project was reviewed with development staff, the members of the various land use departments. And it was with their input that the letter, draft letter before you was prepared. And I'll just, I'll summarize for the public the contents of the letter, the comments. So this is, as I indicated, it's a proposal for four units of affordable housing, two of them 80%. Two of them would be deed restricted for 80% of area median income. Two of them targeted at deed restricted at 100% of area median income. Located on Lewis Neck Road, the address is shown as 55 in the GIS system. It's legally known as Lot C2. And the proposed comments that we have drafted for the board's consideration, note that the subject property is in a residential neighborhood. And in terms of the local comprehensive plan criteria that we look at when we review projects, when we review project eligibility for these 40B applications, we look for greater infill residential development of this nature. Four units on 1.1 acres is considered infill development. It's more than what would be allowed under the town's standard zoning, but by affordable housing standards, it is not particularly dense. So normally, the LCP would be looking for walkable neighborhoods that have infrastructure, walkability to school and services. This location is sort of on the margins. It's, it's not a short walk to services, but within a mile and a half, there is quite a lot. There's a convenience store, a library, a drugstore, a school and various other businesses. There is water and sewer to the site, sorry, water and electricity to the site, but not sewer. The more controversial issue here for the town is the access road. It is a, it's a narrow dead-end road, 800 feet in length. And the planning board is on the record in opposition of constructing four units at this location, though they did reach an agreement with the Falmouth Housing Trust for one unit of affordable housing at this location. So that is referenced in the draft letter that is before you. As a result of that, the Falmouth Housing Trust's negotiation with the planning board, which Frank Duffy is here to speak to more in length, there is a covenant that has been placed on the property and recorded on the deed that limits construction to one unit of housing. And that, in Frank Duffy's opinion, is an obstacle for zoning board approval of a four-unit 40B application. Certainly, the board is well-aware that the town has a very well-documented urgent need for affordable housing. And that's forefront in all of our minds when we review these applications. This proposal is for homeownership units, which is not the town's top priority for new construction of affordable housing. But certainly, there is a need to be generating, the target under the town's housing production plan is 56 new units of homeownership per year, and we are short of that goal. The units proposed, we were very pleased that two of the units were two-bedroom and not three-bedroom because most of what the 40Bs that we receive that we don't, that the town does not subsidize, are overwhelmingly three-bedroom units, which, you know, are that much more expensive and more difficult for folks on the lower end of the income scale to be able to afford. So that was a real positive with this proposal. The size of the units is modest, which again is helpful for affordability, both in terms of purchase and maintenance of the units over time. So really, the issue that's before, you know, the issue of interest is the access. And what the board is asked to consider tonight is this comment letter. And it is our recommendation that the board note that there is a covenant on the property and attach the written opinion from Town Council Frank Duffy. It is not our request to the board tonight to be the arbiter of opposing legal opinions as to the meaning of that covenant. It's really, what needs to be decided tonight is simply what to include in this comment letter that goes, that is sent to Mass Housing and the Falmouth Housing Trust as the applicant.
Great, thank you, Peter. So let me just move to the issue of the covenant and let me have Frank just speak to that and anything else that you think we need as background. And then we'll hear from Karen and then we can take any other comments if there. I also saw Turney Moynihan was in as an attendee, so I don't know, you know, if there's any comments that she needs to make, we can certainly hear from her as well. So go ahead, Frank.
Thank you, Megan. Last week, I sent a summary of my thoughts and concerns on this matter to the board and I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at it. And I won't go through all of the details, but kind of just to summarize. There, the Falmouth Housing Trust applied to the planning board for a determination of access that Lewis Neck Road, which as Peter has reported is a dirt road. They wanted to determine that it was suitable to strike a note on a plan not a buildable lot. As this progressed, there became a dispute between the planning board and the Falmouth Housing Trust over the suitability of access of Lewis Neck Road. And in the end, in the final analysis, the dispute was resolved when the planning board set forth some conditions which they felt had to be met before Lewis Neck Road could be determined adequate. And in return, there was a covenant entered into by the parties, the planning board and the Falmouth Housing Trust, which now has become the source of more dispute because the Falmouth Housing Trust, oh, excuse me, the Falmouth Planning Board believes that the covenant limits the development on Lot C2 to one single-family house. The Falmouth Housing Trust, on the other hand, believes that it does not, or at least they can proceed to build more units on the property. The covenant has been signed by the parties. It's recorded in the registry of deeds. Copies are available. What you were doing tonight is you are not trying to resolve the dispute between the parties. You are simply sending a letter to the Falmouth, excuse me, to the Mass Housing. It's a project eligibility letter and that is the letter that upon being received by Mass Housing and its approval, will allow the Falmouth Housing Trust to proceed with their application for the 40B project which they want to build. The issue of the interpretation and effect of the covenant will be decided probably by the Board of Appeals or perhaps by someone else. We're not asking you to do it tonight. But there is a legitimate dispute. Peter has crafted in his letter a reference to the fact that there is an opinion from my office about it. There's also some input in there from the Falmouth Housing Trust. As to what the Mass Housing will do with this information, I don't know. I'd be speculating if I said. But they might very well just return it and let it be resolved at the local level. So with that, I'm not advocating that you try and resolve this problem. Just be aware that it is there and you decide whether you want to proceed and allow the letter of project eligibility to go forward.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Frank? Doug?
Maybe this is for Frank because he's arguing the other side. I just don't, in reading the covenant, I don't see how there can be any interpretation but that's restricted to a single-family residence. The covenant's very clear and this is back in six, eight months ago, not five years ago. But eight months ago, the covenant says there'll be one single-family house. How can there be any interpretation but that?
Well, that's my interpretation and the interpretation of the planning board.
Thank you, Frank. Sam Patterson, go ahead.
Yeah, I think what's being asked is, you make this a 40B project under comprehensive permit, then the state zoning, excuse me, the town zoning laws are mooted. And it's only the state regulations that apply. So therefore, they get their permit, they can put four houses on that property under the 40B relaxation of zoning requirements. So I think that's basically what Falmouth Housing Trust is doing, is basically positioning themselves so they can build a 40B unit and they won't have to abide by the town's zoning regulations.
So why did they go to the?
Clearly, pretty clearly, you know, spelled out in the letter that they sent to Falmouth Housing, excuse me, Falmouth Housing Authority. I might mention something else that I did a little bit of research to find out. I know that the town Water Quality Management Committee is actually planning to extend the sewers eastward. And I reached out to the chair of the committee and said, when would that happen? Because that's going to be an additional burden on these affordable houses to have to hook up. And it's unfortunate because it would be nice if we're already done. And then that, you know, would be the septic system. That property is located between Great Pond and Green Pond on a peninsula there, not all that far from either one of those ponds. And both of those ponds are. All that far from either one of those ponds, and both of those ponds are significantly impaired by nitrogen effluent. So that's a concern of mine, and I think the other concern is the cost of maintaining that dirt road, which will fall upon the owners of those homes that are there. So I, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable about calling those affordable housing. Affordable housing, because I can see that there's going to be additional overhead over the next ten to twenty years. The pacing of putting in those sewers, as it was explained to me, is going to depend on the rate of debt drop off of the town as to when the town could afford to move forward on that scale of capital improvement project. So, you know, the timing is uncertain, but we know what the town's intentions are in terms of trying to remediate the, you know, the environmental impacts that we've had on our south facing estuaries.
Okay, any other comments from the board at this? Doug Brown, and then one here from Karen. Go ahead.
The reason, I guess, for going to the planning board was to get that note of unbuildability removed. Once that's removed, you've got a lot that's buildable. Once it's buildable, you can apply for a 40B. So it's kind of a you know, it's it's a little troubling that it wasn't disclosed to the planning board. They would have probably put conditions that the road be improved to eighteen feet with gravel as as well as trimming back the branches. They tried to work with the Housing Trust in good faith, I think, and allowed that twelve foot basic width of gravel to remain and do minimal improvements with a little bit of potable filling. And so I feel like the road is probably not adequate to be used for four additional units, and it really isn't adequate for one, but they were trying to accommodate. So they kind of went a little well, a little further to try to fit in a a house for some needy family. And so they're not happy. We're not discussing removing the covenant because that's not our purview. We're just discussing the what we recommend to the mass housing. I guess I would have to say then we should probably consider recommending the eighteen foot gravel roadway to be improved. I mean, the twelve foot roadway to be improved to eighteen. And then also Sam's point about the future sewers is going to be a big burden on affordable units that's going to come along and change that affordability. So I think that should also be included in the findings in the in the letter.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else? Okay, Karen, do you want to just kind of give us a, you're just muted. So just unmute yourself. And then if you think that your council needs to respond to anything, we have, obviously, we we have her response, and we did receive an email even this afternoon about her thoughts on the letter that are being looked at. So but we're happy to have her come in if necessary. So welcome.
Sure, thank you. I'm really not going to dispute the legal terms, but I just want to, a couple of things. Doug just mentioned he wished that the planning board had known that this was our intention. In April of nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, April third, actually, I did meet with the town planner and I showed him a plan that had four houses on it. So this was no secret, Doug. This was not, you know, they've known this a long time. And I know that Mr. Suso and Mr. Johnson Stubb have copies of that email with the attached plan that I sent following up my my meeting on April third of two thousand and nineteen. So that's about a year and a half ago, well, about. So this was no surprise. And I think as as Sam was saying, that the planning board does not have jurisdiction over anything but to release that that access determination. So at the time, we never said, as Mr. as Mr. Duffy said in his comments, that there was any bargain. There was no bargain that we didn't think there was any bargain. No one ever said or and they didn't put it in writing anywhere that, you know, we weren't going to do more than one hubs. If you read that, it says the permit shall not be issued for more than one single family. But that doesn't mean that we can't do a 40B. So just so you know, I just want to make it clear that everything was upfront from April third of two thousand and nineteen. And I can share that email with any of you that need that, but I know the town manager and Mrs. Town Manager do have that email. And I know that you know that there's a housing crisis, and I know all of you are in support of trying to get more houses for people. I also want to talk about the eighty to a hundred percent a little bit. Because, you know, Peter talked about it not being close to services, but people that make eighty to a hundred percent have cars. I mean, this is not people at thirty to fifty percent. So, you know, I understand that we want things close to services, but I I don't think that that's an issue here. And the reason that we're doing two at a hundred percent is because I talk to a lot of people. I get a lot of phone calls about people looking for housing. And eighty percent is very low, you know, I mean, I don't know if you know the numbers, but I can give sheer numbers, you know, for a family of four, it's seventy seven thousand, three hundred dollars. It's very hard to qualify. Even if you have perfect credit history. And the hundred percent goes up to about a hundred and four thousand dollars. So you're talking about maybe two two people who have a couple of children who both have decent jobs, but at a hundred and four thousand dollars, you would be hard pressed to afford a house in Falmouth, because I think the latest figures are that the median income, median house price is four hundred and twenty five thousand. And I believe it's rising as we speak, because as we know, there's no there's no inventory in Falmouth. So the reason we're doing the hundred percent is because there are those people that we want in this community that are going to be filling those jobs that they're that are making between forty and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, some of those new firefighters that we've all added to our tax base for, new teachers. And as we know, and and Nancy can tell you this, our school enrollment has gone down significantly. And according to Massachusetts numbers, you know, it's ten percent over the last few years. So and we know that the reason they closed Falmouth Hospital Pediatric Inmaternity is because we don't have people of childbearing age. And the only way to get them here is to give them someplace to live. So, you know, this is not perfect. But, you know, I, my brother, who's moving back to town, just bought a house off of Pink Street. And they're all quarter acre lots on Fairview, all of them. There's nothing wrong with a quarter acre lot. Most of us grew up on quarter acre lots, you know, so so this is not I'm not asking you to do something extraordinary. What I'm asking you to do is to support affordable housing. And as far as the road goes, my understanding is, is that the owner of the land that abuts ours is going to pave that road. And we said that we would contribute to that, as did the other members, neighbors on that road. That's my understanding. We're talking to the owner that abuts our property. So you know, that is where we are right now. I don't know if Laura wants to talk about the the legal issues. But if you have any questions for me, I would love but I just, I really implore you to support this.
Great. You froze a little bit, but I think what you're asking for any questions. Go ahead, Doug Jones. And if Turney Moynihan wants to, she just types in a comment. She can let us know if she wants to come on board. She may not, because we're not delving that deeply into the sort of back and forth with the legal component, but we want to afford her that opportunity. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Given what Karen just said, and I'd like to reiterate Doug Brown's point. I think the letter should include something about looking for improvement to the road. And if the neighbors are already planning on doing that and willing to do it, I think it'd be good for us to put that in our letter to Mr. Busby, saying that our support would be much stronger if the road were improved.
Okay, great. Welcome, Laura. Did you want to comment on anything that you've heard so far that you want the board to take into consideration?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just very briefly. I think Mr. Brown hit it on the head very well. That, and I think it's important for the board to understand this, that the Falmouth Housing Trust had a purchase and sale agreement in place for this lot for consideration. This was not a donation. They were paying money for this lot valued as a buildable lot. So they could not buy the lot without having the planning board confirm that at least one building permit was available under the zoning bylaw. That's why that process was undertaken, and there was a contingency in the purchase and sale agreement that said the Housing Trust would have the right to get that one building permit before they had to buy the property. If they couldn't get that building permit under the zoning bylaw, they didn't have to buy the property. So that's why it was done that way. And it was made very clear in the planning board proceeding that it was a zoning bylaw proceeding. Forty B was not an issue because the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction. So so there was a staged process here. It wasn't done as a means to try and deceive anybody. It was done for a purpose because we had to get at least one building permit before the lot could be purchased. So also, I think that, you know, Mr. Duffy has has said this very well. This is really isn't a dispute for the Board of Selectmen to get into or to even decide. There are various opinions about the intentions that went on around this covenant. Certainly, we're looking for a letter of project eligibility. My preference would be that you don't even reference this covenant. If you attach Mr. Duffy's opinion, then fine, you know, it speaks for itself. But I don't think the Board of Selectmen really needs to give its own opinions or interpretation on on what that says. It's just not necessary to the process. So thank you for your time and consideration of of the request. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Given what Laura Moynihan just said, I actually do think I like the way the letter already does mention the covenant and attaches. I think it's appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to support what the planning board's done in at least raising that issue. Otherwise, I'm okay with the letter if we can include some language about the road.
Okay, any other discussion? Sam? Just unmute yourself. And then is that you, Nancy, raising your hand? Okay. Go ahead, Sam and then Nancy.
I think if we're relying on verbal communication from the neighbor that they're going to contribute to paving the road, we need some kind of a statement from the neighbors.
Okay, but we could presumably include something about the roads without making a statement about whether or not a neighbor, it could be raised as an issue of of concern.
Okay.
Sorry, Nancy and then Peter.
Likewise, Sam had mentioned the sewer-ing, and I'm just wondering if that concern should be added as well.
Let me go with Peter and then if the board has some thoughts on Nancy's statement.
Sure, yeah, I was just going to say that it's not unusual for the town to have comments in a project eligibility letter that describe things that the town would like to see happen. They don't, they're not requirements, so they're not impediments to the process to moving forward. It's good input for Mass Housing and even more so for the zoning board of appeals when it eventually gets there. So to the point, I don't think we need to mention whether or not the neighbors support widening the road, but if the board feels it's important, that feels that that would be a good thing, then we can add that as something that the town would prefer to see. And and again, that doesn't become a legal impediment. With respect to sewer, I did have a conversation with Amy Lowell, and it's my understanding, although plans are very much in the formation process. But the the Green Pond watershed is likely not in the next phase of sewer-ing. It would be in the one after that. Initially, the hope had been to get all of Great Pond, which would have included the Acapescot Peninsula, all in the next phase, but it looks like funding wise, that's going to have to be broken out into two phases. So we may be looking at twenty years before that that phase becomes a reality for Lewis Neck Road.
Thank you, Peter. That's, I think, helpful to have that timeline. Anything else from the board?
Still feel like the future sewer planning area should be mentioned in the letter. Even though you don't know exactly what the timeline is, it could accelerate. I'm going to certainly advocate for it to be accelerated, so we'll see.
Sam, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, and I I think that's correct. The timing is very uncertain, but there are a lot of pressures from outside organizations, law firms, actually pushing the Cape Towns to accelerate their remediation of the nitrogen loading that we're putting into the ground from all of our septic systems. And, you know, clearly, we would be putting in four more septic systems on this particularly, this one acre parcel potentially. So I, you know, yes, the timing is uncertain. Certainly, the pandemic has raised all kinds of questions on revenues to the town. But there are also other forces that might actually push the town to start it this sooner and take on the debt burden.
Okay, so what I'm, oh, Peter, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point. I just, I guess, absolutely right that there's plenty of uncertainty about the timing of the sewer project. I guess my question is, you know, we do say in the local comprehensive plan that we prefer to have this type of infill development where there is sewer. So that would be a positive in terms of environmental control. We also have a, you know, I understand Sam's come, where Sam's coming from totally, it it may be an affordability challenge. So I guess, I guess I'm just looking for a little feedback. So do we mention sort of both of those things in the same sentence in reference to the sewer?
Any thoughts about that?
Well, I think it's something that, you know, a homeowner's got to anticipate. And Mass Housing should be at least aware of that this is the task. I mean, I I would love to see us eventually put that sewer in. My concern is the ability of a family that's living in those those homes to be able to take on that additional burden, given the fact that these are billed as affordable housing. And I want to see this go through. I'd love to find some way to subsidize and implement in the installation of sewers for these four units. And I don't know whether we can manage to get that done as part of the project or not, but I'd love to see these built. I don't think it's overcrowding the property. I I don't know. I read some information about other lot sizes in the surrounding community that aren't significantly larger or smaller than that. So I I'm just concerned about the environmental impact because long term, that's the legacy we're going to be leaving our children with. It's just a cost that they're going to have to somehow address. And the question really is, will the families that live in those homes be able to be burdened by those, you know, those improvement costs that come along with being forced to put to connect to the sewer?
Okay, Karen?
Yes, so Sam, I I agree with you that if that were going to happen within a couple of years of these people moving into these homes, I would be concerned. But from, for instance, St. Mark's, those people have been there, what, four or five years now? And they're actually starting to do some improvements to their houses because we're the monitoring agent, and they have to get permission from us to do that sort of thing. So the idea is especially, and I know that maybe you understand this and the others, the select board do, but for the general public, is that if someone moves in and, you know, they're making X amount of money, hopefully, by the time the sewer gets there, they're making X plus Y, because, you know, they've done better as, but the whole point is to try to get young people to come to settle here, to have children, to be part of our community, and they're not going to always be making the salary that they make when they start, when they buy this home. So just like the rest of us, I don't think that we make the same salary as we did when we bought our first home. So I'm just saying that I think that if it's five or ten years from now, and they know that that they will be prepared to do that because we're assuming that their their salaries are going to increase as as ours have.
Thank you. Any other comments? So so far, I've heard comments about the road and about at least raising some component about sewer-ing. And is there anything else that people wanted in the covenant as it was already included?
I have a question about the utilities on the road. Does the are the poles owned and serviced by the utility company? Are they private power poles on that road? It's a private road. I'd like that mentioned as well. I just think we should disclose what we know and let them make their decisions going forward.
Okay, Karen, do you know if they're publicly, their utilities owned by the utility company?
I do not know. I do not know the answer to that question. All I know is that, you know, town water is there, and I spoke with Steve Rafferty. He said there was plenty of water. I I do not know, but I know that Mike Busby, Mike Busby has been to that lot, and he and I have had at least half a dozen conversations about the property. And so he has seen it. So he will be able, you know, the suggestion that you're making, he'll be
And um so he has seen it, so he he will be able, you know, the suggestion that you're making, he'll be able um to see that, you know, because he's seen the property.
Great. Peter, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say I'd be happy to research that and include it in the letter as appropriate.
Okay, I think on it, yeah, if you can research it or even if that becomes cumbersome, um just noting as Doug Brown did that it's a private road. I think that whatever we can do to just clarify that point. Okay, anything further? Okay, so do I have a motion with those um points that each member of the board has wanted to have included? Do I have a motion uh regarding this particular authorization of the project eligibility letter?
Patterson, Patterson, so moved.
Okay, do you have a second?
Joan, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh vote by roll call, please. English Braga, aye. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Uh Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have vote to adopt resolution to affirm the sale of real property of the town located in Palm Coast, Florida in the name of Lieutenant James M. Pafford Jr. Essay Fund. So this is something that was before the court, the court, sorry, day job. This is something that was before uh this board um earlier, um just a couple of months ago. And so Frank, do you want to just update us on uh where this stands and?
Megan, I think we're in a position to report that we're very close to closing on the sale of this property, which the town has had it has owned for a number of years. Uh it's in is a Palm Coast, Florida. The the property is not the most desirable property, but now somebody wants it and has offered us a a price we can accept. Um the uh the purchase price is eighteen thousand dollars, um which, you know, sounds kind of low. I don't know how that stacks up in Florida, but it's low by our standards, but it's apparently the market rate down there in this particular area. Uh James Pafford, who lived in Falmouth, um was a real estate broker and developer. In his will, he left this property to the town to set up an essay fund in the in the honor uh to honor his son, uh Lieutenant James Pafford, um who died in, I think it was the Korean War. And uh we now have, we've had some independent money, we had some independent money for the fund. But this money will be received, it will be put by the town treasurer in the essay fund account, which she maintains in the office. And there'll be a prize awarded for an essay every year to a Falmouth High School student, which will be awarded by the uh principal of Falmouth High School and the superintendent of schools, and the essay must be on some patriotic theme. Um we have everything, I think, lined up. I have in my possession a deed which just needs to be signed by Julian, if you authorize him to do so tonight. There's a number of other closing documents which we can sign this week. You are signing a resolution which authorizes the town manager to sign the deed and also to collect the funds. Um I would remind you that this is a document, a resolution which has to be recorded in a registry of deeds in Florida, so you will have to come in and sign the original of this document. Um but that's but what the stuff we have to go through and I will um. So um I hope we're we're all set to go, we're ready to close and we can put this behind us. It's been like over twenty years trying to get rid, trying to sell this lot to raise money for the um the essay fund.
It's a a long, long time, so hopefully it will, this will be a good resolution. Um and certainly, it's a nice um piece of funds to go ahead and and, you know, support some of our Falmouth students. Um so does anyone feel like they need any further information? If not, I would accept a motion.
Move that we accept this uh real estate deal and with thanks to Mr. Pafford for being so thoughtful.
Okay, I have a motion a second. All those in favor by roll call. English Braga, aye. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye. Right, thank you, thank you, Frank.
Thanks. Fingers crossed that we'll be able to bring this to fruition.
I hope so.
All right, next, we have vote to designate members of the Historical Commission Special Municipal Employees for the Purpose of Conflict of Interest Law. This is something that we um regularly have to attend to. Um do it, does the board have any questions on this? Frank, do you just want to remind folks why we have to do this since you're still with us?
Yes, we're doing this because originally the uh Falmouth Historic District Commission members were designated special municipal employees for the conflict of interest law. And Historical Commission members were designated uh special municipal employees for the conflict of interest law. And the designation of special municipal employee is a lesser restrictive designation. And then, of course, a town meeting a couple of years ago merged the two into a new uh committee called the Historical Hist- Historical Commission. And for some reason or another, the His State Ethics Commission has determined that the designations don't carry forward. So we have to redesignate the new members of the new commission's special municipal employee.
Great, thank you. And do we have to do that individually or can we just do that? It's it's as a whole?
By position, you don't you you don't mention the names of anybody. It's just the position, members of the Historical Commission.
Okay, great, thank you.
So moved.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Taylor, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call. English Braga, aye. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Any reason I need to recuse myself for abstaining on this, Mr. Duffy?
Hmm.
Maybe just out of abundance of caution?
You're not, you're not needed, so go ahead.
I won't speak.
That was very direct. You're not needed, I, just for this one vote. Taylor, Taylor, aye. Okay, thank you. Excellent. Um last, on our administrative orders, acknowledgment of contribution, Gardner Road Seawall. Um, Mr. Suso, do you just wanna look uh just serve for the public's purpose, let them know what this is about?
Certainly, um thank you, Madam Chair. Uh the uh board in your packet has a copy of a uh draft letter. Uh it describes the fact that Mr. Michael Fenland and his wife Linda Sallop, uh who live uh uh who own the property uh that is uh affected by the uh seawall protecting uh fifty, fifty-four and fifty-eight Gardner Road. Um they uh received approval from the Conservation Commission to make uh significant seawall repairs uh from storm damage in two thousand and eighteen. The Conservation Commission so approved and Mr. Fenland and Ms. Sallop uh undertook the uh uh cost necessary to make those significant repairs and have asked for a letter from the town of Falmouth uh for tax purposes confirming uh that they undertook those repairs. The town was not involved in that process and the town provided, as you'll note from the draft letter, no goods or services to any of the donors in consideration for the reconstruction of the seawall that provides some benefits to Gardner Road and some other areas in Woods Hole. So this would uh be requesting that the board affirm such a letter if you're uh willing to do so.
Hey, Frank, any reason why we wouldn't do that?
Uh no, I don't see any particular reason why you shouldn't do it. Uh a similar letter issued after a storm in two thousand and five that was again repaired by with private funds. Um we at that time did a title search uh for the property uh and we frankly, based upon the record in the registry of deeds, cannot determine who actually built the wall. But uh Peter McConerty, the Director of Public Works, did uh affirm to Julian in an email this week that the wall serves a very valuable function in controlling floodwaters in Woods Hole and that there was definitely benefit received from this project.
Great, uh Doug Jones?
The thing that what makes this a little bit different is that the person who's actually repairing this wall, his property does not need the wall repaired. It's his neighbors who are actually benefiting from it. And this is the reason why it can actually be a tax deduction for him because he's not receiving any monetary benefit from this work being done. When it was done in two thousand and five, a bunch of neighbors pulled together and those who are receiving benefit could not use it as a tax deduction. But Mr. Fenland is allowed, was allowed to by his, according to his tax attorney, because his property is actually quite a bit raised up from the seawall.
And he did just send us some information, um but again, you know, that'll be, I'm sure his accountant will give him whatever advice he gives him. It's just as to whether or not we want to confirm that this um this event took place, which um Julian is noting that it did. So any further discussion on the draft letter?
I would move support of the draft letter.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call. English Braga, aye. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. Uh thank you, Frank, for weighing in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fenland, for that as well.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for the background information that he sent to us via chat. Um okay, we are moving on to discussion update on COVID nineteen issues. Um as we have been, and then in particular, we have two specific topics that we wanted to make sure the public was aware that we'd be discussing. One is social distancing concerns at selected town beaches and the other is updated discussion on municipal beach parking limitations. So if we can bring in, I see Scott is coming in, we could also bring in, excuse me, Ms. Malloy, um who I believe is still with us. And is Maggie with us? Ms. Maggie Clayton with us? Oh, there we go. Okay, who else am I forgetting that needs to come on board, Peter? Chief Dunn, how could I forget?
Right.
And the only other one, I'm not sure if Chief Small is gonna join us. I think um.
I think he's.
This is everybody.
Yeah, I think um if he if he wants to, he can, but I think he's obviously coming up for the next, one of the next issues. Um so just to um let the public know, obviously, we have been discussing updates um and getting really regular, excellent updates from our Board of Health and our health agent about um just, you know, the behaviors that people are engaging in in terms of social distancing. We received a lot of concerns, um lots of emails um about the Fourth of July weekend. And um the folks who have joined us tonight can speak a little bit to what took place on that weekend and what they did to try to address it. Um but, you know, I think it was um, I think suffice it to say, everyone was was pretty shocked by some of the scenes that we saw, particularly at our beaches. Um the Falmouth Heights Beach um as sort of one notable standout amongst a lot of crowded beaches. Um and so certainly, people were concerned and they have raised those concerns with us. The other um issue that we've heard from some individuals about is sort of about the, whether or not we should increase the parking at the beach parking lots um and some of the challenges around the current state of the parking. So what we wanted to do, we did have a discussion with um Chief Dunn, Scott McGann, Maggie, um Peter McConerty, Julian, Peter, uh Doug Brown and myself representing the board in the discussion. And um I'm sure I'm leaving somebody out and I apologize. But um we did have a discussion last week, um you know, in regards to these concerns. We knew the board wasn't meeting for a while and we wanted to kind of debrief from the Fourth of July weekend, brainstorm, think about if there were any ideas to bring to this board to consider. Um and go over what had taken place and any steps that each department had was thinking about taking going forward. Um so just so the public understands, you know, this has been an ongoing discussion about something that is continuing to be a challenge. Um so maybe why don't I start first, Scott, with you, if you want to kind of give us our regular update and then um just maybe speak to the issues about the uh town beaches in particular, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. Well, like I always like to start with good news. That's okay with you. So our case counts two oh four and has been for over a week, which is the longest period of time we've gone without a case, so. Which is great. Um we have been about six weeks of five or less cases per week. Um some of those aren't even really local. For example, let's say my son's living in Georgia, uses that address. If it comes as my address, then it would be a case here, even though. So some of these cases, even when they're less than five, are not in town or somebody who may have traveled to a hotspot like Florida and came back, may have been a case. That would count towards us if they're a resident. So taking those out is even well less than five, so that's where it's encouraging. I looked at the state site, which gives us the number of testing. We had over between the second and eighth of July, over two hundred residents get tested, according to the data on the state site, which means we are getting tested and not coming back positive, which is always one thing. Um we, again, I heard Sam at the beginning talk about how well the residents are doing and I could agree with him and also the diligent portion of it, because of course, this can spike relatively quickly. And, you know, my fear is, you know, you get a ten, you know, all of a sudden and you're trying to scramble to figure it out. Now, the good news is, I'm a lot better at tracking. The VNA is a lot better at tracking. We've gotten a lot better at doing this, which is always a good thing. Uh it kind of hit us fast. And also, people understand what the social distancing and the opening and the closing and the distancing is. So I think if we do have a problem that pops up, you know, you know, because when we start talking about overcrowding and things like that, that's one of the concerns. I think, you know, we're better at able to handle it and that's, you know, and and I'm encouraged by that. Um this week, we've added the uh the Barnstable County has hired three uh people to help us with COVID enforcement. And I get a person one day a week to help with the complaints. I chose Monday because over a lot, over the weekend is generally when I have the most complaints sitting on my table when I get in the morning on a Monday. So in addition to staff here, we'll have somebody else helping with the COVID complaints. And we do get, you know, quite a few complaints of establishments, locations and things of that nature. So that's, let alone, it's just gonna give me more effort, more people to put on the, more boots on the ground, so to speak, to be able to do that. So um, you know, we do spend a lot of time answering questions. Probably eighty, ninety percent of them of our week is spent answering questions and dealing with complaints. And that's what we'll keep doing. And um, you know, as cases go, obviously, the contact tracing and so forth needs to happen. Um so again, the state numbers look good, you know, relatively good. They're averaging about one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy-five a day, um which a population of six point nine million is is a low infection rate. You know, so the county numbers are also good. I think I added last week that the the Barnstable County, Dukes County and um Nantucket all added up to thirty-four cases for the entire three uh counties. So, you know, all of it looks encouraging. Hopefully, it stays that way. That's kind of where we're at with that. Um getting into the beaches, yes, on the Fourth of July, Maggie called to take a look at the beaches. Um went down there and actually Chief Dunn and I must, because we hang out a lot and talk a lot now, it seemed to have a radar because he showed up at the same time I did. And there were two very large parties, I guess, that were announced via social media that were a problem. Was the beach busy and otherwise? Yes. Were most people twelve feet apart? Probably not. There were some number before that. So there were groups and clumps of ten here and eight there and so forth. But there was two main, big giant sort of drinking parties that were done on social media. Um and so, you know, the chief grabbed a couple officers and we got them as many as we could off the beach. And I guess, you know, later on that night, other beaches were in his issue as well. Um obviously, it's not what we want. Um and so the, there've been some other beaches elsewhere down Cape. The health agents and the chiefs uh talked on a call last week um about what, you know, some ideas. One of the things that came out is that the Barnstable County is gonna help with social media postings and things like, you know, how not to do those types of things because that's tends to be how you get a hold of, you know, because most of them were younger kids under the age of thirty, how to get a hold of them. So that was one of the things that came out, at least on on far as the county end, is to sort of help with the social media and talk about kids. Because, you know, a lot of your infections are starting to happen in that age bracket. You're seeing that down south. And um actually, the last five or six cases were younger as opposed to like when we were talking in in May, most of our cases were nursing home and 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 so forth. Now, it's definitely, even though we don't have a lot of cases and a lot of them to go on, it just appear to be on the. So um, oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention, the hospitals look really good.
Sam, did you have a question just for what uh with what Scott's talking about right now?
Yes, well, actually, it's a it's a comment, kind of uh, you know, piggyback on my earlier comment, sort of acknowledging that everybody's doing the right thing. We have a long way to go. This is not something where we can let our guard down. We we've basically got to maintain these habits and these precautions or this whole thing is gonna explode in our face, just as we see it exploding in the face of the Texans and the Farveridians and the Alabamians and a number of other states around the United States. So we gotta keep doing this and, you know, we gotta think, you know, a year or two time horizon when we've just got to keep doing the same kinds of things to keep this infection managed down. The virus is there and people come and go in and out of our community. It's gonna come and go. And hopefully, the people that came here with COVID nineteen left with it and didn't transmit it to those of us here as residents. But this is a long-term activity and we've got to just maintain the same kind of behavior patterns and protection of each other.
Yeah, one one way to look at it is if we get a vaccine quicker than sooner rather than later. Yeah, one, one way to look at it is if we get a vaccine quicker than, sooner rather than later, we're about maybe thirty percent of the way in. If the vaccine's another year away, we might only be fifteen percent into the whole timeframe of it, so yeah, it is.
So it's a long game. Uh, Diana?
I was gonna go off of what Sam had to say as far as letting our guard down, and I think that's the biggest concern. We are seeing it all over the country, and things are cropping back up. Um, because you get that false sense of security, because we've got really good numbers, there's not a lot of COVID down here. And as we know, what we're seeing in different parts is these asymptomatic positives. People don't even know that they're positive and they are transmitting the virus. So I guess that's the biggest concern. Um, and I have to give the, the merchants in the restaurants some kudos. From what I've seen, they've done an amazing job of getting creative, and people are respecting the, the guidelines um in the places. Uh, as I've been driving out and checking out things, and I, I think the young people is just a different group that we hadn't really thought about, but that invincible, we're fine type of thing is is a little concerning. And I, I think there's, they are seeing, anecdotally, they are seeing some positives at, at some of the urgent cares and things like that. So I think we, we just really have to be still diligent and not let our guard down here. Um, because it's, it's, it's being brought in, you know, I, I think that's the issue.
Thank you. Scott and then Doug Jones.
Yeah, whatever, the one thing I, right, and I think we're better prepared the second time around if it does, that we know kind of got the mask. And I think with down there, they just haven't gotten into the sort of the religion of, you know, real strict guidance to the, the masks and the social distancing. So I think we're better, definitely gonna be better prepared if there's an, if there is an uptick. So I, I mean, that's the encouraging thing, is I think we know what to do if it does happen, right? So that's what I'm, what I'm, what I'm just trying to say with that.
Yeah, good point. And again, they had a very different trajectory of never really locking down in quite the same way that we did. And then their lockdown was for such a short period of, of time uh before things really ramped up. Scott and then Doug.
Yeah, sorry, keep in mind, it's kind of their winter, so down south, it's very hot, they're indoors more than we are in the wintertime. And it's sort of the worst time for them would be the summertime, because when it's a hundred and six, how long can you last outside? You wanna run for your car right to the side of building. Right, it's their sort of winter, and that's kind of what's helping, hurting them.
That's a great point, thank you. Um, Doug Jones?
So the question I had concerned our beaches, I was in the beach in Welfleet uh this weekend and was amazed that if I had taken a photograph, the beach would have looked horrible. It would have looked like it was packed, just with the way that the, the perspective changes when you take a picture. When I was at the beach, and everyone was probably fifteen feet away from each other. So my question for Maggie is, I understood we had these ma- big parties, but in general, on the general of going, people going to the beaches, are they adhering to what we're asking from, or really is it a big problem aside from those parties?
Maggie?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and Board. So um, on the Fourth of July, the Heights Beach was the only site where the crowding became unsafe. Um, every lot in town filled, it was our biggest day of daily gate revenues um of the season. And yet, we didn't see the, the, the number issue at any other beach. Falmouth Heights is about fifteen hundred feet long, so there's a lot of access for pedestrians and bikes and drop-off, and the area is flat, walkable from Worcester Court, Maravista, et cetera. Um, in general, the issues we're having with non-compliance are people not wearing masks in the parking lot or in the bathrooms, which is where we ask them to. Um, like uh Ms. Malloy said, the, at the restaurants, everyone's being really great. They know they have to wear their mask upon entering, they have to wear it until they get to their table, and then when they're seated with their party, they're allowed to take it off. And that's what we would like to see at the beaches. But at Old Silver, I can, I might be the only person of twenty-plus walking on the bridge between the public side and the resident side, and I'm the only one wearing a mask. So in terms of compliance, it, it's hard to judge, but I would say that that's where we really want the public to engage. And um Chief Dunn and Peter McConerty and uh Town Manager's Office, we all worked last week to put out additional signage and change the guidance of the messaging that we're putting out there about no alcohol on the beaches, which is a bylaw and it has always been a rule. Um, no ball-playing and wearing a mask. Um, and trying to push out those messages at those problem locations, uh Chapacoyt, Old Silver, uh Goodwill and the Heights that could see the largest numbers.
Thank you, Maggie, and we'll come back in a minute to sort of the discussion of where we go, but I, I do want to let Chief Dunn just weigh in as to both um just Fourth of July and what has been the protocol going forward, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair and rest of the board. Uh, Fourth of July, and it's already, as you've already been told and some of you have seen, um, Falmouth Heights Beach looks like any other Fourth of July, except it didn't have any planned events. As far as the two large parties, um we did go down and uh interacted with them all. Um, they were really there to party, they weren't there to go to the beach and go swimming or anything like that, they were there to party. And uh made them, made them all aware of the uh, the bylaw as far as alcohol, uh and had it all poured out. And once it was pretty much poured out, they didn't want to hang around, they actually cleaned up, we made sure they cleaned up the area. Um, one of the parties had actually two trash bags uh full of bottles and cans, um, and they left. Haven't seen that, yeah, this past weekend, uh I know the weather wasn't forecasted to be great, but it turned out to be pretty nice. We al- we, we do have a seasonal officer in Falmouth Heights, it's one of the beaches we do have. Uh, what I ended up doing this past weekend was hiring another officer to uh be there with him, and they enforced the uh no drinking and um the coolers. We asked people, we weren't searching the coolers, we asked them if we could look in their coolers, and if they complied with it and they had alcohol, we told them they need to remove that from the beach, either take it back to the car or take it back to their homes, which they did. Um, and I think uh the two officers that were up there ended up pouring out several, several cans of beer and or cups of beer. And um it wa- was nowhere near the problem it was on Fourth of July. Uh, no, nowhere, nowhere close. Um, and moving forward through the summer here, um due to COVID, we had quite an issue as far as hiring some seasonal officers. But that being said, we have uh, just today, they started, we have seven new officers who graduated from the Cape Cod Academy last Friday. Uh, three of those are gonna be put right into field training with our, with our regular patrols, and the other four are going to be um assigned to walking beats. And supervisors will be moving them around, whether they're from beaches to Main Street, wherever the need for law enforcement will be, so that we can continue to monitor and make it a safe uh time for everybody.
Great, thank you. So what I think would be helpful is if we could talk a little bit about um, you know, any, I was, obviously, the chief has sort of told us in terms of his staffing, what he's gonna do going forward. I want to talk about the issue of parking and then also signage. Uh, we are not going to put our um beach staff in the position of trying to enforce these rules. They are young men and women for the most part, and um they're certainly not gonna be confronting individuals. Um, so I think the, you know, the first line of defense is really having good, strong messaging. And then Maggie certainly has her protocol in place for um, you know, what happens if people aren't complying with certain rules at the beach. Uh, we talked a little bit about in our phone call last week, um just a collaboration between the Health Department and Beach and um also Police Department, if, if scenes like what to place on Fourth of July continue to unfold. Uh, frankly, I think even though it hadn't been talked about in advance, that played out pretty much exactly as it should, where we had the collaboration between um Scott and the chief and Maggie, um, you know, really coming forward and trying to address what was a growing um, growing concern. So maybe we can talk a little bit about folks uh first about the idea of opening up more parking spots and what the board's position and the health agent's position is on that, and then we can talk about, uh, are there any other measures that we can take to try and get the messaging out? So what are people's thoughts about the parking lots? I'll just, I'll just briefly start by saying, um, I have noticed that as soon as the parking attendants are gone, and I know there's not much we can do about this, but it's like a free-for-all. You know, in the parking lots where people parking kind of every possible which way, um, you know, to fit their cars in. So I, I do know, and we've received some comments from folks that, you know, that they feel that's really congested, and since people are kind of trying to fit their cars in wherever they can, some folks have asked, why not open up the parking lots? Um, you know, to have that, have more room for people to uh be able to park. So um those are just some of the concerns that people have brought to us. So anyone's thoughts about parking? Doug Jones?
Is there any chance of changing the hours and extending it where they're, so their attendance stay till five instead of three-thirty?
Maggie, do you want to speak to that? That was something we had talked about, do you wanna?
Sure. Um, yes, it is a possibility. Um, but the staff being there will just enforce the sticker only or the daily fee. They won't necessarily be able to enforce the crowds and the non-compliance um for letting more people in. Um, I told um those on the conference call last week that I would work to either look at different shifts or just having the parking attendants match the lifeguards, which they did on Fourth of July. We extended the parking attendance until um four-thirty at Manot Surf Drive and Old Silver and four forty-five at the other locations, um, so that they were in the lot almost as long as the lifeguards are on duty.
I think that does maintain better control of the lots.
I, I, I agree, I, I think that that four, that four-something time period, you know, when people, it's kind of before dinner, um, and people who don't have stickers, or even if they do have stickers, suddenly it's sort of a mad rush sometimes, that after-work crowd. Um, right around that four, four-thirty, that seems to be a period where oh, there's just a lot of folks who are pouring onto the beach. Um, but that's just an observation. Sam?
Yeah, Maggie, is there a time, is it during the week, for instance, or the weekends, when you see this large congestion that occurs after the beaches are supposed to be shutting down?
So um, we unfortunately don't have eyes on the beach once the lifeguards leave at five o'clock. And I know that Chief Dunn and his department have fielded a lot of this in the five to ten PM range, which is from my department going off duty until the lots get locked at night. Um, so this weekend with the, we didn't have the issues of crowding like we did on the Fourth of July, but I had to call the PD um all the time on Sunday for uh illegal queue lines and live parking forming, because every lot in town was full by ten-thirty AM on Sunday. On Saturday, every lot filled except for Goodwill and Old Silver Public, which shows that people made different plans based on the forecast, because that was the better beach day than Sunday.
And did I miss someone's hand? One other thing we had talked about, um, and I'd be interested in just hearing if the chief um has seen any further concerns about it. But one of the concerns that we got was uh regarding Black Beach on Fourth of July weekend, and it, you know, really huge party that took place with um hundreds of folks, maybe around four hundred individuals, who were um really partying on the beach, and there was quite a bit of trash. Um, and so one of the discussions um was if we're continuing to see that sort of late-night partying um on the beaches, and we had talked about maybe taking a look this weekend. I don't know if there's any update, Chief, did you have any update on whether or not there continued to be a problem on any of the beaches?
Not, not this weekend, the evening, we didn't have the problems that we did on the Fourth. Um, it might have been some, a small potty up at New Silver Beach, but other than that, it was, it was nowhere near what we were dealing with on uh the, the weekend of the Fourth of July.
Okay, great, thank you. Doug Jones?
So the two uh parking lots I was wondering about, which are the Surf Drive and Mill Road. The Mill Road now, because it's a smaller lot, seems to have a longer live parking line to try to get in than it used to when the lot was fully open. And I guess I'm more concerned about that existing, because that's a beach that, when I've been there, has not been overcrowded on the sand. Um, and I feel that Surf Drive is a little bit the same way, those are two beaches that aren't getting overcrowded, and we may be creating more of a problem with the parking lot than we would if we had those open.
Maggie, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. Um, so uh Mill Road has significantly changed over my tenure with the Beach Department. It used to be a hidden gem, and now um it's one of, a, a very popular place. So um, we track the time that parking lots fill every day. Mill Road fills as often as the Heights or Woodneck, um, or Old Silver or McGansett. But the density of the sand there, it would be hard to know if opening up more spaces would change the number of people, because it is also our closest beach to the bike path for access. So we do see bikers that leave their bikes on the rack there um and go across.
So what, one of the things, I mean, really, we closed the beaches not about concern so much with people parking next to each other, because they can obviously stagger when they get out, but with that concern about the beaches being overcrowded. So I, I think when I look at each beach, the question I'm asking is less about the, you know, is the parking lot full? I don't think people, I don't think they're, and Scott, please correct me, but I don't think that the parking lots have to be a place of significant risk, because you can wait, if the co- car next to you is unloading, you can wait and unload, and if people are wearing their masks as they're supposed to in the parking lots, um, then, you know, they're, they're doing the right thing. To, to me, you know, when we look at each parking lot, the question I ask in my mind is, if we open more spaces, are we overburdening the space that we have for sort of beach real estate? Are we inviting so many people that they can no longer distance at that twelve-feet spacing? Which I think is, you know, I, I think as a town, it's inappropriate for us to, and there are some beaches where if the parking lot is full, um, you know, Chappie at High Tide is a good example, if the parking lot is full at High Tide, th- that, they can't all fit on that beach. And so we're really sort of setting up, I think, a, a conflict in some ways to invite full, the full parking lot to, you know, to, to be utilized when there's not enough real estate there for people to, to use. So I do see each beach a little bit individual, you know, sort of individually. I don't know what your thoughts are, Scott, and then Doug, I see you raising your hand.
Uh, you know, I, I would defer to Maggie on whether we could fit, you know, who we can fit and where we could fit them. You know, if, if people stay twelve feet away, I don't think the parking lots are an issue is when people are going to the beach. Probably more of an issue at sunset, you know, people tend to hang more in their cars, but you know, is it, I don't, I don't know what, what the square footage versus the cars and whether people can stay twelve feet or not, to be honest with you. But that would be the, that wouldn't be way, I wouldn't be able to really answer that.
But i- I, is it, I just want your, your thoughts that if people are doing what they're supposed to do with, so if a parking lot were able to be fully open, does that pose a more concerning risk than the way we're doing it now? I mean, right now, there's no spacing between the cars, so I don't see a difference. Do you, do you know what I'm saying? The way we've closed the lots, we haven't spaced the cars out. So to me, I don't see, opening it fully doesn't seem to be any different in terms of the parking lot.
Correct, yeah, in terms of the parking lot, and if you could fit them, you could fit them, I mean, if, you know, you, you know, I, I just don't know whether you could fit them or not, based on which beaches.
Which beach?
Yeah.
Um, uh Doug Brown and then Maggie, maybe you can give us some thoughts on that. Doug?
So, we've had several comments, and you know, I don't make my decisions based on comments, but I do take the good ideas and the bad and, and sift through them. And I think that one good comment today was from one of the residents in town, said, "Why not consider opening the resident side only on uh Old Silver Beach? He's been to the beach and doesn't see a, a crowding issue." Maggie, what do you say to that? Would the resident side be okay to open the rest of the lot? Just one beach and just?
So the resident lot at Old Silver is usually the first to fill. Um, today, it was the only lot in town that filled at the current fifty percent capacity. Um, we can't prevent people from walking across the bridge, so there are many people who park in the public lot and walk across and use the resident beach. So I don't know, um, Manot has a similar situation, Manot is the other beach in town that has a resident-only lot and a- Minot is the other beach in town that has a resident only lot and a public welcome lot. But at, at that location, Minot West is a lot larger to potentially handle an influx, whereas Old Silver, they can get pretty packed in. And that's where we're seeing the non-compliance with the mask wearing, with people trying to find their spot on the beach.
And we can't turn people away that are walking from the other side, huh?
I, I don't see a way for us to do that, because some of the people who are walking from the other side are resident taxpayer sticker holders who just park on that side because the resident lot is full and they walk over. The other side isn't just daily fee.
Right.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Malloy?
Well, and then we come back to that fundamental question. Is it doing what we hope to do by, by shrinking the parking lots, you know? And I guess that's the question. I'm not sure it is, because again, if you can't get a parking space, there's lots of places that you can walk from, the bike path parking lots and all those things, if you wanted to get creative. So I guess my, I think my bigger concern is the lack of masks. So, and, and, you know, um, that's where I'm coming from. I don't, I don't know if it's doing what we intended it or hopes that it would do by decreasing the volume, because it's just feels like they're still crowded. If they wear their masks and still, at least we've got some sort of barrier, you know? And that's where I feel it's kind of, you know, people walk and, you know, spread myself out and then watch and people just walking by all over the place with no masks on. I'm like, okay, I got mine on, guys, you know, type of thing. So I don't know, how do we do that? How do we do that?
I mean, I think, you know, if we don't feel that there's a huge appetite to change the parking at present, I don't know if I'm hearing that from anyone. I'm happy to, for us to discuss that further. I mean, maybe we can continue to watch to see, you know, what's taking place and have that input from Maggie to if she's seeing, continuing to see, you know, struggles or, sounds like during the week, it's not as much of an issue. It's the weekends, obviously, when it's much busier. But in terms of the piece that Mrs. Malloy is talking about with, um, you know, just trying to educate and get better signage, can we just talk about the current state of what it is people are seeing as they come to each beach? Uh, what are they, you know, what types of signs are they seeing? How big are those signs? Because we've also received some, um, concerns about that too. So maybe Maggie, do you want to let us know what, what's up there and?
Sure. Um, so, uh, at three of our ten beaches, um, Old Silver, Goodwill and Falmouth Heights, there is an electronic message board dedicated. Right now, it says Falmouth Beach Rules on Screen One. Screen Two is no alcohol, wear mask. And Screen Three says cool or subject to search. I had asked Peter McConerty, we might be amending Screen One this week to say reminder, no ball playing. Because that's a place for transmission that we don't want at our beaches. But besides that, we have forty-five aluminum signs from Barnstable County that Scott McGann, um, got for us. And we have numerous, um, eleven by seventeen laminated signs that, um, were started with the Barnstable County reopening task force template. And then, um, additional ones were made on Thursday and Friday of last week for Old Silver, Chappie and the Height. And more are coming out this week for the other seven beaches. Those are size forty-eight font for bullet points. And, oh, thank you for putting up the sign. So the aluminum ones go in depth, they have a picture. The laminated ones are, uh, they have six of those seven items um, on the original eleven by seventeen. And the new ones just have four points, which are, um, dispose of trash properly, no alcohol, wear mask. And Scott, maybe you can tell me what the fourth one is.
I think it's that coolers are subject to search.
Oh, thank you, Peter. So, um, these signs are on each parking attendant booth, each lifeguard stand, staple guns, fences, um, at beach path entrances. And then we have the three electronic message boards that are seen from far away. We also invested in three additional lot full, lot open signs, so that it's visible from the road, not just the parking attendant putting a rope up when the lot is full in an attempt to get people to stay on the road and keep driving as opposed to forming a queue line.
And Maggie, can I ask you one other question? Just what's your feeling about, I know the goal is not to have, um, our staff working as enforcers, but as people are driving onto the beach, are they, are they saying to them as they're coming, you know, remember to wear your masks in the parking lot? Are they doing any of that kind of last minute? You know, most people are rule of bears, so if they're kind of reminded of that, I'm just wondering what your, um, what your thoughts are in that.
Yeah, the parking attendants, um, do take their job as the face of Falmouth very seriously. All of our staff was issued two masks, because we expect them to wear them whenever they're within six feet of someone else. And so, um, if they're greeting someone, especially at a beach where there's money and ticket exchange, they're wearing their mask, they're making sure that the patron has their mask on before they have that transaction. And, um, they're saying, thank you, please put your, please make sure your group is twelve feet away from the other group where you set up on the beach. That's the biggest reminder that they're giving at the gate.
I mean, maybe it's, maybe they can just remind people as they're pulling in, wearing masks in the parking lot.
I can make that.
Add that to their, I mean, not to add more to them, but sometimes people need that last minute reminder, so.
Yes, I'll add that to the directive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else? Um, any other questions for any of our, um, folks here? Is there an appetite to do anything different with parking at present? Is the feeling of the board that we want to just continue to monitor and get input from, um, Maggie and from Scott and Chief Dunn and everybody else who weighs in on it? Comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's, that's my sense. And I, and I just want to thank them, because it, I'm impressed with the conscientiousness and the, and the, uh, and the effort this being made to remind people, at least try to take advantage of their good nature. Of course, we know we're going to have the libertarians that basically will be every man for themselves. And, you know, I don't, aside from arresting them, I'm not sure how we're going to be able to socially control that group of people. Thank you.
No, I, a really great job and a huge thanks to all of you who dealt with the issues on Fourth of July, because that was, uh, you know, that was no small thing. I think I drove by there four times and I just kept, my anxiety just kept building as I saw the crowd getting larger and then I, I knew you were taking care of it. So it's really, um, a good response. Um, and I do think that reminding people about the alcohol consumption and the fact that it's not allowed and addressing it will cut down on those really large gatherings that we're so nervous about. Where people, you know, because they're, they're at the beach, they're drinking that, you know, even if they normally would abide and put masks on and socially distance, those things kind of go away when they're really consuming that much alcohol. So thank you for addressing that. Nancy?
Just one other piece to be mindful of, um, you know, moving forward, is to go back to the question of, does the, um, limited parking meet what we're trying to do? And how do you measure that? So moving forward, in order to answer the question of whether we open or we, we don't, open the, the parking lots fully, is to think about, is it doing what we want, want it to do? So I would just ask Maggie that, her, you know, moving forward, if her people could kind of look at that and think about how you measure that. That would be really helpful.
Great point. Uh, Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to add on that, on that very point that Ms. Taylor was making. Maggie and I were just talking earlier this morning about setting up a, a really easy rubric to, for her guards to measure the, uh, the crowd density and social distance compliance, just like a one to four or five scale, um, that they'll check off through, you know, three times a day, so that we get some. It's not going to be perfect data, but at least some qualitative, um, observation for each beach every day, this is what we're seeing. So we'll have a little bit better information for the next time we have this conversation.
That would be helpful, thank you. Yeah, that's really helpful. And I think, you know, we just, we've talked about this before, every beach is so individual. So, you know, there may be different responses for different beaches. And, and so I think if we have some of that data, it helps us maybe more fine tuned in, in the things that we do as we go forward. So that's great, thank you. That would be really helpful, Peter. Great, anything else?
Just one more clarification, if I could, about that. One, one last timeout, someone asked us. At Old Silver resident side, Maggie, I know you said that the parking lot fills up first each day. What about the beach itself?
So, um, that beach is larger than the public side beach, but, um, there, the people, the residents at Old Silver take pride in great, um, care about their beach and it's their, it's their beach. Um, they take that responsibility very seriously. Um, and they want it to be just for residents and taxpayers. So people who get there early stake out their spot. And there are family groups who have been going there for years who sit in the exact same location as when I started lifeguarding fourteen years ago. But in general, because it is a west side beach, the tide does affect the amount of beach. So, um, the first week we had of full work, which was, um, Sunday, June twenty-eighth to Saturday, July fourth, it was a low tide in the morning week. So there was a lot of beach at the beginning of the day and it shrunk as the day went on. Right now, we're in the opposite, um, because it's swinging back. Uh, so that'll just be a constant ebb and flow. I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Brown.
Not a hundred percent, but I just, I'd like to try to focus. That's our, like our jewel beach. Whenever I have friends that come to visit, I say, I'll go to Old Silver, it's my favorite. And if there's a way that we can find a way to manage that and open that lot so our own residents can have a little more enjoyment, I'd like to try to work toward that.
Yes, I think that, um, the patrons that I've interacted with as well, the, uh, the Minot resident only lot and the Old Silver resident only lot, are, do seem to be a high priority. When I was originally looking at the parking lot number of spaces grid, um, we have the total number of spaces. I have a total number at seventy-five percent reduced capacity, fifty percent and twenty-five percent. It's different at every location. We also can look at square footage of beach, like, um, Madam Chair said about Chappaquaig. Fifty percent of the Chappaquaig lot does not account for the square footage of that beach at high tide. So, um, we can try and get the most recent survey. It hasn't been done in a few years, which is hard for the beach profiling, but to gauge a hundred and forty-four square feet per party, how many parking spaces that could be, it could be cumbersome, but it might be a nice way to start, uh, looking at a different amount of spaces.
Doug Jones?
To follow up on Doug Brown's idea, could we make the resident parking lot more open, but then make the non-resident parking lot smaller? So the number of spots available would be the same, but more dedicated towards the resident parking as opposed to the non-resident parking?
Maggie?
Um, yeah, I don't know that that's my jurisdiction to make that decision. But I think when we were looking at the original cases for, um, Old Silver, the public total is four hundred and seventy-eight spots and the resident lot is eighty-six spots. So you're starting with a big discrepancy, um, there.
Well, I guess I would suggest we open up the resident lot completely and get, take away forty-three more spots from the non-resident side.
Yeah, we, um, I can discuss that with, uh, Chief Dunn and his officers who are stationed out there daily, um, my parking lot staff. I do anticipate great pushback if that is the only lot in town to get opened up and every other lot stays at fifty percent, especially when we're seeing the non-compliance of the, Old Silver is the only location other than Surf Drive that has an interior bathroom for, in, for infection spread.
You know, I don't think we want to precipitate more rebellion.
I guess I'm not, I, I don't think the number of people would change. It would just be, where is the same number of people parking? So I'm not saying the total, I'm not suggesting we would increase any spots total. We would just move them all out of the non-resident into the resident lot. Or it could even be fewer total. You could say, all right, if we're getting forty-three new resident spots, we're going to take away sixty-five more non-resident spots.
Maggie, can you tell us just what you're, again, just what you're seeing on that beach in particular in terms of, uh, people complying and there being enough room to comply with? Obviously, it's a bigger beach, um, with the spacing, with the number of spots we have.
Sure. Um, so there are six to seven lifeguards daily at Old Silver. We've only had two EMS events this summer that, um, Chief Small's team and Chief Dunn's team have helped us respond to. And they're, they were both at Old Silver. A land seizure and then a serious cut that caused someone to pass out. So, um, I feel that even if we shifted where the parking was in terms of not changing the spaces, you're still going to have people walking across that bridge without wearing a mask and, um, using those bathrooms without wearing a mask. My department is doing a daily bleach down to adhere to the state guideline, for what we have to do to keep those facilities clean. And the portable unit, uh, toilet unit from our vendor that's contracted through DPW, they're getting cleaned daily as opposed to the three to four times a week that in previous years has been in the contract, to do our part to mitigate the spread. But I would say that there are many, many days where it looks like a regular day at Old Silver, non-pandemic with the number of people. So.
That's one more.
Yep, Doug Brown?
Can we add some signage that says resident side only, residents only in this area? I mean, I know you can't stand there and check IDs, but if people are walking in and wandering in from out of town and they see a sign that says residents only, they know they're not residents, some of them are going to turn around and go back.
I know Frank's not here anymore, but I think the only problem is the beach itself. Well, I don't know this, I'm just asking. I don't know that the beach is designated, I think it's the parking lot.
That's what I'm saying, can, can we do that?
Um, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that answer. Maybe we could find out, could we find that answer out from Frank at some point? Julian? Oh, you're on mute, but I think you said you were happy to follow up on that. Okay.
Happy to do so.
Okay.
The public rights on shoreline rule means no one owns the area below the high tide line.
Right.
And in general, when we identify the beach, it's the lot that is resident versus public, not the beach itself. And, and when you say that you, it's the crown rule of Falmouth and people want to bring people there, then you have taxpayers who want to take them to the resident side of the beach and they're bringing out of towners in their group. So I feel that would be very hard to enforce, for the two to three police officers or my parking attendant staff.
And may not even really truly be a legal, um, act on our part to do that. So, um, I mean, I think we've heard from Maggie and Peter that they're going to use this rubric. I mean, I think it would be helpful if we have that and have that information for the next time we meet to maybe make a decision, excuse me, about the parking lots and to see if the, you know, again, as Nancy and I think other members have raised, the issue of whether or not the action of limiting the parking has, um, resulted in what we were hoping for, which was people spacing out if, you know, on the beach and doing what they need to do. So I think it would be helpful to have that data. Are folks comfortable with that? Okay.
I guess so, one more week.
All right, thank, yeah, yeah, so we can, we can have that in front of us. All right, thank you all very, very much, really appreciate it. Um, next, we have an update on, on, um, fire, oh, Maggie, did you? on fire. Maggie, did you raise your hand? Did you want to say one more thing? No? Okay.
No, I was just.
Update on fire departments. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I think we lost her. Okay, Julian, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just, just as a reminder, on a COVID 19 issue generally, we'd had a request from Friends of Falmouth bikeways to to be able to erect in signs independently along the bike way that just says, indicate, wear a mask. And it seems to be a consistent and reasonable request from the friends who we work with frequently, Peggy Johnson and the many other dedicated volunteers. We appreciate so much. I would certainly recommend seeing that if it would be the desire of the board as well.
Okay, so yes, there's been a number of folks, Patty and a whole bunch of individuals have raised some concerns. We've heard it from a number of people sending us emails with the narrowness of the bike path, just really reminding people of the importance of having a mask on. So is the board comfortable with DPW working with the Friends of Shining Sea to, to take care of that?
Yes, please. I think it's the small signs with the small letters wasn't working, so they want something a little more visible.
Yeah.
I think that's probably a good idea.
Great. I don't think we have to vote. It's not on our, it's just one of the things that we had talked about. So great. Thank you. And thanks to them for bringing that to our attention. Okay. And next we have update on fire department staffing since July 1. Chief, oh, there you are. Chief Smalls here. And this is, you know, in regards to the, the new staffing model that started on July 1. So we're going to just hear in general about how that's going and then in particular about the West Falmouth station as well to just, that's an area of concern for folks. So and I see Mr. Campbell is present as well. Welcome. So Chief, if you want to kick this off and let us know how things have been going and just fill us in, that'd be great.
Sure. So thanks for having me. Overall, it seems to be going really well. I think you've got the spreadsheet in front of you that Deputy Chief Smith put together that shows between the first and today, the 13th, how many times the station, West Falmouth Fire Station has been staffed. In addition, it indicates how many times, even though that station wasn't staffed, that there was an additional firefighter assigned to the North Falmouth Station to provide.
So can we, let me just hold on. Let me just ask if Peter, if you would be able to pull that up and share that when you have a moment, the email that the chief sent to us, just so that the public can take a look at it while he's
I'll do my best to get it up.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, Chief.
So, no, so that's okay. So, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty easy to read. It's pretty easy to look at. It shows that currently the North West Falmouth Fire Station is staffed about 50% of the time. And on two other occasions, there were two, like I said, there was an additional firefighter assigned to the North Falmouth Fire Station to bring the staffing there to three, which is a three man engine and a three man, a three person engine, three person engine and ambulance for responses in that, in, into the Northwest part of town. I can tell you that as far as the operations go with the new staffing plan, I, it's been understatement to say it's working out as well as we had expected. Uh, I, you know, it's working better than we had expected. I can give you a couple of examples. First week of July, uh, the first, first alarm assignment we had was an alarm activation at the East Falmouth Elementary School. We were able to respond, we were able to respond with fewer trucks, but we still were able to have, it was 10 on duty firefighters that responded to the alarm at the East Falmouth School. Whereas in the old system, that would have been, uh, you know, a one man fire engine from East Falmouth, a one man fire engine from headquarters and piece together another one or two person truck from somewhere else. We're able to have 10 firefighters respond to that incident, no additional overtime cost to the town. While that incident was going on, there were still two advanced life support ambulances available for the town of Falmouth, but they weren't needed, but that's how we anticipate that working, especially in that part of town. We had a significant fight down at Woods Hole the other day that under the old system would have been a one man fire engine from Woods Hole, followed up by a one man fire engine from headquarters. Ladder truck unstaffed because the headquarters ambulance was out. Because of the new staffing model, that was a two person fire engine. Responded from Woods Hole backed up by a three person fire engine from headquarters. The next engine coming from North Falmouth was two people. Ladder truck was again unstaffed because the headquarters ambulance was out on a call. However, Engine 25 responding on the second alarm from East Falmouth had an officer and three firefighters on board. They were able to split their crew on the way by headquarters. Additionally, two additional off duty firefighters had responded to headquarters. So the ladder truck actually responded with four firefighters to that call. That's significantly better than anything we've ever done. Just a few hours ago, we had a building fire at an occupied hotel on Surf Drive, I'm sorry, on Minot Road. Fortunately extinguished by the sprinkler system. And under the old system, it would have been a one man fire engine from East Falmouth backed up by a two man fire engine or maybe a one man fire engine from headquarters. This particular case, the first two truck from headquarters had three firefighters on board. The engine from East Falmouth had two, was backed up by the East Falmouth ambulance, which was returning from a call in the neighborhood. So we're able to muster a considerably more robust response. Considerably safer for the firefighter, considerably safer for the firefighters. And by definition, considerably safer for the citizens. You can see specific to the West Falmouth Station, you can see, I think also I sent Peter, I don't know if he got it. There's, there's a spreadsheet that Deputy Smith, that's date specific. Uh, that one, like I said, that one of the deputies did, it's date specific as to what, you know, the tours are divided, the shifts are, 24 hour shifts are divided into day tours and night tours. So you can see by looking at that, you know, it's been filled about 50% of the time. Has been challenged to fill on the weekends, not, not surprisingly so. I think what Peter's putting up right now is the overall, that's the overall, overall call volume in town since July 1st. You can see what that call volume is. Chris Campbell is here and Chris can actually talk, Chris has ran a whole bunch of numbers for me today to talk specifically about response times. Response times townwide and response times, how they, how they what the effect has been in West Falmouth. Like I'm not sure if you've got the email that I forwarded to Julian, Chris attached. There's some PDFs associated with it that are generated by the dispatching software. They're a little clunky. For somebody that doesn't know IMC to be able to read, but the, the explanation that Chris has in his email, in effect, if Chris is here, if he wants to talk a little bit about response times between, Chris did response times for the first through today, this year, and he also compared response times through the first, the equal time last year. And Chris here, Chris, you want to talk about that since you did all that work?
That'd be great. Present, Chief. So basically what I provided for the chief was a rundown of responses townwide for July 1st through July 12th, so a 12 day period and compared 2019 to 2020. So for 2019, for that 12 day period, there was 323 incidents townwide. And the average response time across all of those incidents was 7.67 minutes. And I think that what I, as well as the chief, and I'm sure the rest of you will be happy to hear is for that same time period in 2020, a slightly downtrended number of 279 incidents. So about 50 less, but given the pandemic and things of that nature, I think that's relatively comparable. The great piece for us is that, and for the chief, is that the average response time across all of those incidents was reduced by over a minute across town to 6.14 minutes. Again, I think that's a major accomplishment. It's certainly, in my opinion, a better service to the citizenry of Falmouth. Additionally, what I pointed out to the chief was when we took those numbers and we looked specifically at West Falmouth, the districts. In 2019, during that same 12 day period, the chief's department responded to 11 incidents in West Falmouth. And the average response time of those 11 incidents was 10.92 minutes. In 2020, we responded to 20 incidents, so an increase in incidents with a decrease in time. The average response time under the new staffing model for 2020 was 9.73 minutes. So again, over a minute reduction in response time in the West Falmouth Village area. So I think that speaks, you know, volumes to the changes in the staffing. And, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that anyone might have relative to the numbers.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's helpful to hear some of that information.
You do take a look at that too. Now, so one of the, Chris was able to, able to provide as well on IMC, which is very telling, is that the scene, the amount of time, average on scene time means how long the crew is on scene before either a patient's transported to the, you, primarily before the patient's transported to the hospital. The average on scene time also dropped from, uh, let's see, from an average last year at the exact same time, the average on scene time was 15.37 minutes. The average on scene time this year with the new staffing is 12.91 minutes. What that means is that with the, with the, with the more robust crew sizes that are responding to the calls, it's taken considerably less time to get people extricated from their house, extricated from the basement or carried down the stairs or removed from whatever situation they're in and transported to the hospital. Primarily this obviously since 80% of what we do is EMS. So that, that means that that, and the level of care that we're being able to provide on the calls is also improving greatly. It also improves the safety of the crews when you have three or four people doing the job that two people used to do. And this is all sort of the ripple effects that we had hoped to see, that we were confident we would see in this new system. And as it turns out, uh, we are seeing those positive ripple effects. I understand that especially as far as West Falmouth goes, it's a relatively small sample. You know, over a relatively short amount of time and a relatively small number of calls. But I think it tellingly means that as far as the response times go, in West Falmouth, we're doing okay. I think with the larger sample that we see across all of the town, to be able to compare that apples to apples, July 1st to the 12th of this year, or July 1st to the 12th of last year, that we're shaving time, shaving minutes off the response time on average and spending less time on scenes where we're able to mitigate the scenes quicker, which is a quicker turnaround, which means that ambulances are getting in service faster. That's, that was the, some of the things that we were confident that we would see. And it's, and as looking at this sample, it seems that we're trending in that right direction. There's always going to be the outlier calls. There's always going to be the calls where where two or three or four simultaneous runs deep. And somebody who's the fourth or fifth call in line is going to have, is unfortunately going to have to wait longer than what we would typically like to see. That's not new as of July 1st of this year. That's something that has happened across the town in all districts in town for the 30 plus years that I've been here. That's something that is always going to, until we have a manned fire station every 100 yards, those outlier calls are all, that's always going to happen. There's always going to be circumstances where somebody, some folks just, depending on where the call is and what the call volume is, some folks just have to wait longer than we would like to, longer than we would like or think that is acceptable.
Or even just a, or even just a more centralized, you know, I mean, obviously, well, I know you're, I know you're saying it tongue in cheek, we won't have a fire station every, you know, 100 yards, but even if, you know, we're, that's part of why we've undertaken the task of, of thinking about how we have another fire station that's more appropriately positioned to respond to, you know, the calls and that's part of what that committee is doing. Chris, did I see your?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to expand on, on the chief's comment because the impacts of this staffing change and how it affects the chief's operations is twofold because what's unseen is the operations that it impacts from my agency's end. And my staff, due to these changes, is much better prepared to be able to handle those second, third, fourth simultaneous calls because they're not dealing with the 15 phone calls of people calling in and determining what's off duty call ins and determining where they're going and bouncing them around from station to station to try and make different one and two man companies to be able to respond to these calls. And in fact, they're able to handle these emergency calls in a quicker fashion and get help to the residents in a, in an expedited manner. And it's making their job better, and the service is better that we're providing from the 911 end. And I, and I think that's the unseen part of, of all of the numbers. And I just think it needs to be, you know, known to the board and, and to the townspeople as well.
Great. That's helpful to sort of picture that stuff that happens in the front end of trying to piece together the proper response. Any question? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Chief.
Just real quick, I mean, you know, just by way of an example, on this particular 4th of July, you know, we, it's a typical 4th of July, we were three or four simultaneous calls deep. There was a medical call dispatched out on Black Beach. The ambulance, the next available ambulance to respond to that was coming from Woods Hole. That's a 12 or 13 minute ride, which is not anything that we would like to see on a regular basis. Turned out it was a non-emergency that was related to a big beach bash that was happening, that there was no patient found. And, and that's an example of what can happen and that's, but that's an example of what has happened. Certainly on busy July, you know, July weekend days for the, for the years and years and years that I've been here. The North Falmouth ambulance has to go to East Falmouth. The East Falmouth ambulance has to go to North Falmouth. The Woods Hole ambulance has to go to Wacoi. But by example, one other of the things, one of the ripple effects that we have been seeing, when you look at, you know, when you look at the number of calls townwide, which I, I can't, I don't have it in front of me, but the number of calls in Woods Hole, although that number of calls in Woods Hole is low, that's not the number of calls that Woods Hole has responded to. Because we're finally now have the fourth ambulance in service for the town, 24/7/365, which up until July 1st had been spotty. That's, it has the effect of keeping the North Falmouth ambulance in North Falmouth to handle calls in the Northwest part of town. There's always going to be circumstances where we're multiple runs deep, where there's going to be an, what we would consider to be an unacceptable response time. But it's always been that way and we're doing everything that we can do to minimize that. But that's just the nature of community, you know, a combination small to medium sized, you know, suburban slash rural fire department. That's the nature of the beast and it's fire departments, at least on Cape Cod, a fire department's the size of Falmouth. We're doing everything we can to keep that to a minimum, but it's just, it happens all over town and it will, and it will continue to do so. We're just, our current resource deployment is the best that we can do to keep that to the bare minimum townwide.
And we do have mutual aid as well to supplement.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I, any questions from the board? I know we have some public comment that folks want read in. Any questions for the chief or for Mr. Campbell at this point in time? Yes, Doug Brown.
So Chief, I know that Mr. Suso explained to us recently that the COVID situation prevented us from getting some new recruits that we were hoping to put on this summer, which would have helped supplement the staffing at West Falmouth. And given that that was an unexpected turn of events and we're dealing with it the best we can, when we do have these situations where you have one firefighter that's ready to volunteer, but you don't have the second one, is it possible then, and I asked you this before and I know you've told me, I guess I gotta ask it again. Is it possible to us find a guy from one of the other stations that might be fully staffed that could make that West Falmouth a two man station? Could you just tell me one more time?
Respectfully, this, the notion that headquarters now and East Falmouth are fully staffed, headquarters certainly is not fully staffed. We still, when the headquarters ambulance leaves, which it does multiple times a day, that leaves the ladder truck unstaffed. So it's not, headquarters certainly isn't, it's not by any stretch of the imagination fully staffed. To take one firefighter from headquarters and rotate them out, then the hierarchy of two, where we need two for every, every other piece of apparatus falls apart. It also then, what you, depending, we also need that extra person to headquarters, who is the, what we call the paramedic interceptor, the fly car for the paramedic, to be able to still, we still need to get two paramedics out to ALS calls. And we need to back up the headquarters ambulance with a third person on many calls because we've hired, we've recently onboarded eight basic EMTs that aren't paramedics. We just take that person and put them in West Falmouth, that eliminates the ability for them to rapidly get to other parts of town when they're necessary. But as soon as the headquarters ambulance leaves with two people on it, that hierarchy of two falls apart. So it's, it's not that simple to do this in ones. It's, it's just, it's not that simple to do. It's a valid question, but it's not that easy.
It's, it looks good, but it's not good.
Not, that's correct. The whole, all of it then, all of it becomes kind of a house of cards. And certainly out of the headquarters fire station, which as we recognize, we know is the, by far the busiest fire station in town, the redundancy. The redundancy in the in the ability to then get an engine or or a two man engine or sometimes, you know, the three man engine, which we've been, which we've been doing. To get that truck out the door, that that falls apart if we send that personnel.
Okay, thank you for telling me that again.
Thank you. Any other questions for Christopher or for the chief? Yes, Nancy.
I just not a question, but a comment. I it was really nice to have Christopher join us because his information was really, really valuable to hear it from. The call center. So, thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I'm going to ask Peter, I'm just, Peter, if you could read, I know we have one letter that. That from Mary Bunker either that she had asked to be read into the text. Could you do that? Because I don't have that on hand. And there was it was a chat text from a Pamela Ross. I had emailed her back and asked if she wanted me to read it into. The record. I didn't hear from her, but I will read it because she typed it in. Okay, so this is from Pamela Ross. Let me read this. We can. Pardon me, Peter?
Sure, I'm happy to read that letter if you wish.
Okay, let me just let me just read Pamela Ross's statement. I found some of Mr. Suso's comments into enterprise concerning. There's a quote, quote, "It's not about having something shiny and red show up quickly. You may have to wait a bit," end quote. This comment was condescending and arrogant. As a town manager, it is his responsibility planned for this entirely foreseeable situation. It is his and the board's responsibility to provide safety for all of the townspeople. Minutes and seconds count. Since July one, the station West Falmouth has been staffed sporadically. There has been no staffing on weekends. What are the plans to resolve this life safety issue? So I think I've read it after we've kind of had the discussion, but let me have Julian and then chief. Go ahead, Julian.
Madam Chair, just to clarify for the record. Those comments did not come from me. That's the first time when I when I read them in the enterprise, it's the first time I'd seen them. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
That was my my comments. It's meant to illustrate the fact that what we've been doing with one man fire engines. I've said this repeatedly. It's not the first time I've said that. What we've been doing to meet our response times with one man fire engines to have. Shiny red fire truck in the driveway in a couple of minutes with one person on it has been grossly ineffective. And that's what that comment was made was meant to illustrate that what we've been doing. To just have a fire truck pull up in just a couple of minutes with one person on it. Has been horribly unsafe and grossly ineffective. And that's why I made that's what that comment was meant to illustrate. That was my comment, not the town manager's.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And if Brad is listening from the enterprise. That's that's just a correction for who that quote is attributed to. Peter, could you read Mary's? Uh, let me just, I'm sorry, let me just say for Ms. Ross, because I know we've had the conversation sort of in in advance of her comment, but. It just to clarify, the station has been staffed for half, so thirteen out of the twenty six shifts. For the the month of July. It's been staffed half the time and you're correct that the weekends have been, I think, the least staffed or not staffed at all. Chief.
Overall, that's that's correct. Neither of. The week, July third, the Friday night, July third, it was staffed. But it was not staffed on that Saturday and Sunday and was not staffed this Sunday and Sunday. Also, real quick, though, it is worth noting, Madam Chairman, that. The West Falmouth Fire Station has Engine twenty four has been being been browned out. The policy of browning out Engine twenty four to provide increased staffing. To head to the downtown and East Falmouth area is was a policy that was implemented by Paul Broder in nineteen ninety six. It was one of the first things that he did. When he became fire chief was to recognize when we didn't get call back. What he used to call the core. We had to protect the core. So that that the the station has been browned out. Several times each week, sometimes several times a day, sometimes for days on end. Fifty two weeks a year for twenty six years. And that's just the nature of the fact that we had such low staffing that Chief Broder recognized. That when you've got limited resources, you have to put them where they can do the most good. So that this is just an extension. It's an unfortunate extension of what's been happening. Literally since nineteen ninety six.
Can you just explain that term browned out?
Browned out means well, it's browned out means that when we have sufficient staffing, it's open. When we do not have sufficient staffing, it's not, it's not in service. But that that truck has been relocating. There hasn't been a Fourth of July in the last fifteen years that Engine twenty four has spent. Anytime in West Falmouth, it's always been out covering other parts of town because we don't have. Because the recall that we used to live and die by was fail, had failed, and that's why we're not doing it anymore. That's part of the reason that we're not doing the constant recall because it was grossly ineffective. I think you can see just by the examples that I gave you of the incidents that we've had in the last twelve days. You know, a high hazard alarm activation in a school and two building fires. That what we're that the robustness now of using the on duty resources is considerably better. And it's certainly considerably safer for the firefighters.
Great, thank you. Yes, Chris.
I I think, Madam Chairman, it's also important to point out again. To the residents concerned that. The response times in West Falmouth since July first. Compared to the same time period of of last year have decreased by over a minute. Given the staffing model that's in place. So again, we're we're providing a response to that area of town quicker than we were last year. When we had a one, at best, a one man engine company there. Dependent on what else was going on in town.
Doug Jones.
Do we have any idea of the twenty six shifts in two thousand nineteen? How many of those were? Not covered in West Falmouth? It wasn't all twenty six out of twenty six, was it?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
But that but at the corporate idea, I it's I I think I know where you're going at the. But at the course of the day, once the run started coming, that firefighter that was on duty at West Falmouth would get an Engine twenty four and relocate. To either headquarters or East Falmouth to cover those gaps.
So there would be gaps in the West Falmouth that were unstaffed. Significant, you know, maybe not fifty percent as it was this time, but maybe thirty five percent or something like that.
That's accurate, and that's been literally going on for twenty four years.
So we're not comparing a fifty percent to zero percent. We're comparing fifty percent to thirty five percent, which is a much smaller comparison.
That's that's very fair to say, yes.
And with better response time.
Yeah, I think the response time is the part that I find to be most helpful in terms of. You know, the rest of it is, you know, you've made this point time and time again, you know, wherever the bodies are. Just means something at the start of the shift. Once the calls start coming in. Everybody's moving. And so at the end of the day, the thing that matters the most to the person that calls for care is how quickly care shows up. It doesn't really matter where the care comes from. It's just how quickly they get to you. So I I really, I second Nancy's. Point that the information that that Chris has shared, I think is very helpful. And just kind of shows on the ground what's taking place. So, you know, we'll just, we will obviously continue. You know, to can continue to look at this.
You should also mention the quality of care is improved because you have more resources on the scene for a particular call. That's critical.
Great point, Tim. Um, Ju- Julian, Nancy, and then I'll have Peter read Mary's letter. So go ahead, Julian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just I wanted to. Piggyback on that comment, just to remind everyone that. You recall, we had a very comprehensive study by a fire consultant. That looked at location analysis and actual calls, and I wanted to underscore. As Chief Smalls well aware that we looked at three years of actual run data. So we looked at the real world and what was actually happening comprehensively. Throughout town as part of that consultant analysis. And that's further indicative of of what of the actual data that we've been looking at. To determine what is effective and what is what is more effective and what is less effective. So just wanted to underscore that. And obviously, that consultant study is a matter of record and is. One of the things that the. Fire location, the future fire station location committee is taking into account. In the work that they're in the in the midst of as well.
Great, thank you. Nancy?
So I would just request that from this point to the end of of July and maybe even into August, if we could continue to have the. The data from Chris, I think it's really, really helpful. And I think it does show that the response time is decreasing, and I'd like to continue to be able to. To show this as we move forward during this transition.
Great.
Chris will be more than happy to provide that for you.
It's so nice of him to volunteer for that task. That's. That's 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 great of him. Doug Brown.
Any updates on when we might get some more reinforcements coming out of the academy?
Sure. So. I I don't know if we talked about this last time, we last time we spoke. Mass Fire Academy is now back in full swing. What they're doing is a, they're doing a virtual hybrid mix. Where it's two weeks of classroom time followed by two weeks of on campus, then two weeks back in the classroom. So our five, we had one firefighter that was a lateral transfer. He was already academy trained. He's up and running. He's good to go. But these other five firefighter, one was a one's a paramedic, four basic EMTs. They started last Monday. They're two weeks of classroom. They're doing at fire headquarters. In the Emergency Operations Center. And then on next Monday, they'll report to Stowe for two weeks of hands on. So. It's it's unique. The feedback I've got from the guys, I spoke to them just this afternoon, and they said. It's great. They're learning a lot. The feedback that we're getting from some of the. Fire Academy instructors is that realistically, this class size is so small. When they're doing their hands on evolutions, they'll get more touches. As far as they'll be able to throw more ground ladders. More pump evolutions because the classroom is small and we think it can be very, it should be very successful. So they will graduate. I believe it's the Monday. There's a holiday involved. It's the Monday. It's in September. I think it might be the fifty. I'm not exactly sure. And they'll graduate. That's five guys. They'll hit the ground running. They've all front loaded. A lot of their field training because we started them. In anticipation of them being at the academy sooner, but a lot of their. The training that they have to do about eight months, they've done. You know, several of those months already, so they'll be able to hit the ground running. Second week in September. That that's not going to guarantee that the West Falmouth Fire Station is going to be open. Twenty four seven three sixty five, but that's certainly. It means instead of having to hire two or three or four people on overtime or force people to work overtime. To get to fourteen, we'll be starting the shifts at closer to fourteen. So the chances of getting fifteen and sixteen. Get considerably better. We had one firefighter came back to work today. Who had been out of work long term with a line of duty injury, had been out for many, many months. He came back today. We have another firefighter who's been out with a knee injury, a long term on duty knee injury. He's coming back the first week in August. So we're actually, but again, the injuries are fickle. It's hard to put your hand on. That's always like the, you know, that you always kind of move the goalpost because somebody may get hurt tonight. But overall, things for us as far as our, we're finally sort of trending in that right direction. And I think really by the end of September, we'll be in a good place. To be able to have these the shifts. The fifteen and sixteen position that takes to either put one person in the north additionally or two in the west. But it'll can happen much more frequently.
And I think too as well, chief, you know, we have a lot of. You know, new legs that are on that came on this year. And when you add the new recruits that are going to come, hopefully, you know, in the fall. I mean, it's just to to have fresh talent like that, people who are at the beginning of their career. You know, it sometimes means a little bit different in terms of what they're willing to take on for overtime and do for shifts. They. They may be in a different place in their life where they have different commitments. Maybe not families or, you know, situations where they have a little bit more flexibility and want to earn that extra or work those extra shifts. So I think that, you know, having all of those new bodies is really a positive thing. So keep our fingers crossed.
Even prior, you know, even prior to COVID, what we're seeing it through the COVID, with the with the amount of big fires we've had lately, we've noticed in this last group. Of recruits that we've hired, a lot of these kids are Falmouth kids and a lot of them are single and hungry. We're seeing a considerably more robust response of off duty members to building fires than we've ever seen in the past. We're seeing. Guys showing up off duty for building fires. Where we would go in the past ten years, there'd be one or two maybe off duty people. We see in four, five and six of these guys. That they they live in town. They want to get the fire experience. They're getting the fire experience. So we're seeing a much more robust off duty response to the building fires. Having those people respond off duty. That is, you you can't count on it and it's hit, it's it's. But it seems to be getting consistently better. And so you see guys go up and it's been, it's helping on, it's helping. For us to accomplish the fire ground tasks that we need to accomplish much quicker. Than we have in the past. It's been it's considerably better with this for this new batch of kids we hired in the last year.
That's great. And please pass on our our gratitude because that's wonderful. Peter?
Since we're on the topic of the, you know, updating on filling the vacancies, I just. Wanted to make sure that it's clear to the public. I think the board is well aware that. The five positions that the chief is speaking of coming on board in September are not the eight for. The eight positions that were on the override. So the positions that were on the override, we expect to take. Chief, about a year to fill. Is that correct? So in terms of that expectation of. Being able to be at sixteen on a regular basis because we approved the override. That's still a good ways down the road.
Yep. No, great. I mean, I think it's important to keep to be very clear. And realistic about expectations. So that's a good point. Thank you, Peter. Peter, if you wouldn't mind reading Mary's letter, please. Since you have it on hand, I would appreciate that.
Your thing. So this is a letter dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty, open letter to Town of Falmouth Select Board from West Falmouth Village Association Board of Directors. Dear Select Board, the West Falmouth Village Association would like to acknowledge and thank the Falmouth firefighters who are giving up their precious time off. To work overtime staffing the West Falmouth Station. We understand summer is a very busy and all too short time of year for their families and we appreciate their service. Despite the best intentions of the overtime volunteers, the current staffing plan endangers our lives. We strongly urge the Select Board to take action to correct the situation with which left Station Four unstaffed. And effectively closed much of the first week of July twenty twenty. We believe it is your duty as public officials to ensure that all parts of Falmouth have acceptably rapid emergency response times. We understand that when the full complement of firefighters is hired and trained at the station will again be regularly staffed twenty four seven. With two scheduled firefighters. In the interim. Steps must be taken to ensure that all parts of Falmouth are equitably covered in emergencies. The solution is simple. Adjust Chief Small's plan temporarily and assign two firefighters to each of the four stations, Woods Hole, West Falmouth, North Falmouth and East Falmouth. Given the recent increase of firefighters from ten to fourteen positions, we expect that every station would have adequate twenty four hour coverage. This organization has steadily lobbied for West Falmouth to remain staffed and open since October seventeen, twenty nineteen. When Chief Small abruptly announced the planned. Planned closure during a public presentation of the Northwest Fire Station Study. The voices of our members were heard loud and clear this past fall and winter. Calling for continued staffing of the station. They spoke at every select board hearing, wrote dozens of letters delivered to this board to local newspapers. And many spoke up at the forum the board hosted at the high school. Most importantly, when it came time for vote on the proposition two and a half override in May twenty twenty. Our voters showed up and forced to deliver a highly unlikely victory for the fire department staffing package. In a pandemic, no less. West Falmouth Village Association advocates for rapid response times in all parts of Falmouth and respectfully urges this board to take action in support of public safety. In an emergency, seconds and minutes count. Sincerely, Mary Bunker Rither, West Falmouth Village. Association Board President on behalf of the West Falmouth Village Association.
Thank you for doing that, Peter. And we have brought. Oh, where is, where are we? I saw Maury here. She, oh, here she is. Okay. I know that you had mentioned that you wanted to make a comment. If we can invite you on in and you can make whatever comment to towards this discussion that you would like.
Hello, thank you very much. It's been very interesting to listen to this conversation. I before I read my statement, I actually had a question for Chief Small after hearing him. With the West Falmouth closed and it took Woods Hole thirteen minutes to get to Black Beach. How can that be an improvement on response time? Can I be heard?
Yep, I think he was just trying to unmute.
Yeah, I believe I said that that was. That was the outlier that nobody really thinks is acceptable, but that's. Unfortunately, that's going to happen. It doesn't just happen in Black Beach. It happens all over town, as for a number of years.
Which brings me to another thing that if this has been going on for twenty four years, I think it's really sad. That we're still in this position after twenty four years, knowing that we have these problems, but that's another data hash. I the reason I wanted to get on the chat is obviously I'm Maury Harlow Hawks from West Falmouth. And I take great exception to Mr. And now I know it's not Mr. Suso, and I apologize, Mr. Suso. I will correct it to Mr. Smalls comment. In the enterprise, when there seems to try to spin the longer time wait. For a firefighter EMT to arrive at a medical emergency is acceptable. When they do arrive, there will be two firefighters. Now, I'm not sure. Who said that because now I'm not sure what's correct in the enterprise, but somebody said that. I just want to bring to your attention that my husband, Arthur Hawks, is still alive and well today. Because for very good reason. He didn't have to wait. he didn't have to wait that extra time when he suffered a life-threatening medical emergency, a stroke. The firefighter, one, from the West Falmouth Station, arrived in minutes and was well-equipped with lifesaving equipment on the engine to initiate treatment and stabilize him. If you had taken the time to learn about survival rates from a stroke or a cardiac event, maybe you would change your mind and retract your statement and order the full-time staffing of the West Falmouth Fire Station. I would also like to add, and now I know it's you, Mr. Small, not Mr. Suso, it's not just having something shiny and red show up quickly. You may wait a bit longer for a piece of equipment to arrive, but now their ability to execute to task at hand has been greatly enhanced with an extra person in the vehicle. That was in the July 20th, July 10th, 2020 enterprise, quote-unquote. Unfortunately, Mr. Small fails to understand that time is the key factor, not how many men or a piece of equipment. Because, guess what, when you're late, you're dead. So I have never thought of it as a shiny red vehicle. It has always been, to me, a lifesaving piece of equipment with a very special person on board. Firefighters show, that show up late and you're dead, that's a problem. I have never thought that this would happen in my village. And unfortunately, it's going on and on and on. And Mr. Small just made sure that after telling us 24 years of this nonsense, and it's going to continue on. I appreciate Mr. Jones, and I'm sorry, Doug Brown and Ms. Braga for responding to my emails, which were the only select persons that did, and I really appreciate that, thank you very much.
I, I, I just want to comment on that piece before I forget. I just have to remind people again that we can't all comment because it violates open meeting law. So the policy of the board, for quite a long time, has always been generally the chair or the vice chair, sometimes both, but usually just one of us responds. Because if it violates open meeting law, if each one of the board responds to you, because now we're having a discussion without it being in front of the public. So I just want the, the public to know that it isn't because, you know, Nancy doesn't care, or Doug Jones, or Sam, but we, we've tried to make it, because we don't want to run afoul of open meeting law, so we've tried to be really strict about either Doug or myself answering. So, you know, most people are only ever going to get a response from one of us.
I just want that clarification.
Because it is something people ask about a lot. Can I ask you, can I just ask you one question? Were you able to hear about the, and I would just, would like to know what your thoughts are about those decreased response times? What were your thoughts about that?
The degree, the decreased response times, unfortunately, most of the time, the West Falmouth number 24 was in Falmouth or East Falmouth covering for them a lot over the years, and Mr. Small will concur with that, I'm sure. Because it's the go-to engine that when somebody was out, that one covered the other stations. I, I'm sorry, I don't know who Christopher Campbell is, he did not give his title what he is, so I have no clue what is he?
He directs our dispatch, he's worked for the Town of Falmouth, he's the director of dispatch.
Made it easier for dispatch as well. Am I correct?
I think what he's saying is, and Chris, you can respond, but my understanding of what he was saying was that the part of why the response times have gone down across the board is because with two people on an apparatus, it makes it easier to direct that piece of machinery. Is that correct, Chris? I don't want to put words in your mouth, this is your...
I'm more than happy to respond, Madam Chair. So basically, you know, the, the numbers, I think, you know, speak exactly to, to the data that we get from, from our CAD system, from our computer aided dispatch system, and, and those state, you know, looking at the specific data that, that, that the response times have decreased. And we've been able actually to reduce that response time and respond to more incidents in the West Falmouth area in that 12-day period. Again, to the, to the chief's point, you know, we're looking at data from, from a 12-day period over two years, so, so we're a little limited in that, and I'm, I'm more than happy as, as Ms. Taylor had requested to, to continue to provide the information to the board as they need it, or, or request it, quite frankly. I will say that I think, I haven't been here for 24 years, clearly. I, I've been here for, for just over a year in Falmouth. And under, under this staffing model that we have in place now, even with the, the station staffed, as the numbers said before, you know, 13 out of 26 possible shifts, that's even more telling. We have a truck in service in that area, I, I think more often than we had it last year, from personal, you know, knowledge of the town. We have a truck in that section of town more often, and we're able to respond quicker, you know, with, with that current staffing model, and then go from there. So I, I don't know if that, if that answers Ms. Hawkes' question, but, but from, but from that end, that's my, my information.
Yeah, I guess I, I would just say, oh, Maury, just you gotta unmute yourself. Still muted. You can hit the spacebar, there.
Hold down the spacebar, yeah.
There you go.
I appreciate that, the information you just gave me, I just don't know how, with a station missing from an entire side of town with no one in it, that we can have better response times. I'm sure there are places, and I just, I went to every forum, and now I'm hearing that we have three men on a piece of apparatus. And Mr. Small told us that we have to have two, so I just don't know.
We have to have, yeah, we have to have two, that's required. If one extra person shows up for an overtime shift, we can't put that one person in West Falmouth, because we're not, under the contract has to be two. So what I think the chief said is he's putting that extra person in North Falmouth, so that the, the, you know, the crew that shows up to respond is a three-person crew, which is, you know, generally better service. So I think that's what, we're not required to have three, we're just required to have two. But if someone shows up for an overtime, instead of turning that person back, because we don't have the second person to put them in West Falmouth, he's sort of beefing up North Falmouth, is what he's saying.
All right, so it's costing us a lot of money to have an extra person in North Falmouth instead of two in West.
I think the total so far of overtime was like 16,000 overtime. But again, if we recall, our old model had significant overtime. So we'll, I mean, I think what we'll do is we'll continue to look at both the cost and those response times, and the, so if Chris can continue to monitor the response times, I mean, I know you don't have to monitor them, the system tracks it. And if the chief can continue to provide for us the updates on the staffing, on when, when the station is staffed, and when there's a third person in North Falmouth, and also on the overtime issue, so we can see the numbers at, you know, how the numbers are playing out. I think that the public needs to be able to see that on an ongoing basis while we're trying to sort through this. I saw, go ahead, Maury, and then Nancy, and then Doug Brown.
Maybe Mr. Chief Small could clarify this. So, just so I'm clear, so if one person only volunteers, you send them to somewhere else to beef up, not, and you need two to volunteer in order to go to West Falmouth. So when we've had, out of, out of the 13 days, six of them, I think I wrote down, because we are very aware of how many days. So the days that were closed at West Falmouth, somebody actually could have volunteered, but you put them somewhere else?
I put them, when the one person volunteers, they go to North Falmouth, which is specifically targeted toward beefing up safe response in the northwest part of town. Only to the northwest.
Okay, that, that's very helpful to know, I appreciate that. All I can say is, I'm sure all of you, Mr. Suso, I know lives in West Falmouth, but you're very fortunate not to have a red sign on your lawn that says your station's closed. I hope someday I can take those signs and burn them.
Well, maybe not burn them, but that's, maybe, maybe just dispose of them, but I, I think, you know, I know we're trying hard, this board is taking this very seriously. And, you know, again, I think continuing to have that public information available is really helpful to understand exactly what's going on. I saw Nancy, did you have your hand, and then Doug?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes, I just had a question. On a fire truck, does that fire truck have lifesaving equipment on it? Like just a regular fire truck?
Regular fire engines have basic life support equipment on them, yes.
Thank you.
Doug?
I, I was, have to admit, I was pretty unaware of how unstaffed West Falmouth was. I knew there was only one person there a lot of times, but I didn't realize the level of vacancy. And is there a way?
I mean, over the years?
Over the years in the past. Is there a, a record of that that we can kind of narrow down, or is that just a general idea?
In 24 years of paper data, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know how to do that.
I wouldn't want 24 years, but just, if we could just reflect on the last couple of years and just say, this is what we've been living with, and I just don't think people realize that.
On a day-to-day basis, it's rotated out of there to other. That would be, be hard to track. I can try, but that's going to be very, very difficult to go back to every, I'd have to read every daily log incident.
To see where, to see where the machinery went.
All right, well, I don't want to waste a ton of your time, I was just really surprised to learn that tonight, and so, thank you for sharing that.
Certainly.
Anything else from Ms. Harlow-Hawkes or anybody else?
All set, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I think just so, for folks who are watching, I think you, you know, you can anticipate that this will be an ongoing, you know, report where we get, just like we've been doing with the COVID, you know, getting regular updates, we'll definitely get regular updates. Even if it's something that's provided to us and we share it with the public about response times and, and staffing, so that folks are aware. Okay, so thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
One last question. I know we did ask, I mean, the, the residents here put our signs up that it's closed. Is there a reason that the town won't take action and put a sign up when the, the, the fire department guys go out? There's a sign about, it's a little teeny sign that's on the door between Mullions, you can't even read it, that they can't leave by putting the "Fire Station's Closed" sign up?
Or maybe a different, a different kind of sign, because I think it's a little confusing if it's a sign that's all over people's private property, but maybe we can talk about putting up a different sign that is more, I think your concern is visibility. That you really wouldn't know unless you got out and maybe walked over to look.
Correct, and I do it five times a day. So it would be nice if they put a breadboard sign up like "Go Vote", and it just said, when the guys leave, they look, put the key in the door and walk out, they put the sign out, and the residents know that either be really safe, or if you see something really bad, you're going to have a...
Okay, so I think we can, I would just say, I think we can talk about that further. I know some of that discussion had, had already started, so Julian, maybe we can talk about that further with the, the chief and with the union folks to just sort that piece out.
We're, we're happy to discuss it further. What we want to be careful of is sending out a, a message which is misleading, particularly to visitors that coming into a West Falmouth renting homes, properties that may inappropriately conclude that we have a closed station and they have no service in their area. As Chris Campbell has confirmed, and along with Chief Small, we're able to document in the first 12 days that response times are actually one minute quicker than they have been a year ago. So we want to be very careful about sending out information that might be misleading, but we're happy to talk about it.
Yeah, maybe not the word "closed", but "unstaffed", which, you know, is, is, you know, addresses more of what's happening. I think "closed", if someone drives by it, again, I, we don't, the, the station is not permanently closed. I understand people's concerns, and I'm not trying to be tricky with words, but it's not, you know, a closed station is one that is just not operational ever, and that's just the way I view it, and I think a lot of people would understand it. I think the concern is that residents want to know when there is no staff there, and I think that that's a different, that's a different message, and I think that that's a message that we can talk about. Having that information that's more easily available for people to see.
Well, unfortunately, it is not a tricky word, it's basically the fact. And unfortunately, the residents and the taxpayers and the summer people that pay a lot of money to be here for a very short period of time are very aware that you can call it anything you want, but the real fact is, is it's closed. It might be unstaffed, but it's closed, the door's locked, there is nobody home, and there is nobody there.
Okay, I, I won't argue with you about semantics, but I, again, I think when you have staff there half of the time, I think that's a different message, and if there's some, you know, people are seeing a message that just thinks that, that we're, it's relaying the idea that it's closed all of the time. But again, we can look at putting up some kind of signage so that people understand what's happening on a day-to-day basis there. And making it something that's more visible than what's on the door, which I think has been the practice for a long time. Okay, anything else from the board on that issue? Sam?
Yeah, I, and I, not staff doesn't mean that there's not fire and rescue coverage. And I think that's the thing that's bothering me, because we're talking about improving the service across the entire town, and I'm all for that. But I don't think you could look at, say, the Asshumant Valley community up there and say that they get any better service than West Falmouth does when there happens to be no staff in that particular firehouse. It, we've got to look at providing this service to the entire town in the best possible way, and trying not to literally underserve any aspect of the town itself. It's not a simple problem to solve. It's got to be looked at as a probability and distribution, because the incidents are occurring, you can't predict how many are going to occur in any given part of the town. You're trying to recover, cover these demands in the best possible way you can. And there's not an exact solution to that problem.
Thank you. Okay. So to be continued in terms of discussion. Okay, we have transportation project presentation. John Diaz, Greenman Peterson Incorporated Traffic Consultant, sorry, a lot later than we had anticipated. But if we could bring him on board. And Mr. Suso, did you want to just introduce this particular subject matter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're, we're joined, as you noted, by Public Works Director Peter McConerty and our consultant from Greenman Peterson. We have been working on a number of ongoing roadway and highway-related projects with the town, and this affords us an opportunity working with a consultant, and also I should note our town engineer, Jim McGlaughlin, is with us as well. An opportunity to update the board on the status of these multiple very important roadway projects that we've been working on in some cases for many years. And some of these have a, really a finish line that's still several years off, but it's important to provide this update, and if I might, Madam Chair, I would have Peter McConerty potentially introduce John Diaz, or if Peter prepares to proceed in some other way.
That sounds good, I'm just gonna, excuse me, I'm just gonna step out to get some water so I don't keep coughing. So I'm just gonna pause this for, for me, but go right ahead, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. We've been working with John Diaz with Greenman Peterson for several years now, he's a traffic consultant on, on-call basis. He's worked on many projects in town, he fully knows the, the process working with Mass DOT. Greenman Peterson was also the design engineers for the Jones Road, Davis Straits, Worcester Court intersection, and also for the Davisville and Route 28 East Falmouth Highway intersection. So they're fully aware of, of Falmouth, what's going on, and how to work with DOT with some of the projects that we're working on. So without any further ado, I'd like to bring in John, talk about some of our, some of our projects and our big intersections.
Thanks, thanks, Peter, and good evening, members of the board. Madam Chair was not stepped out. I had sent a presentation down in PDF, I don't know if it's possible to bring that up, or you want me to? Oh, there you go. All right. All right, so as, as Peter mentioned, we've been working in the town for a number of years, and we currently have four projects ongoing, and then obviously you're aware of the, the Route 28 corridor project that we're just getting involved with now. So we have four intersection projects. First is at Gifford and Jones Road. first is that, uh, Gifford to Jones Road, uh, looking at some improvements there. Uh, the second is, I'm sure you're aware of the, the pedestrian signal going in on Palmer Ave for the shared use path crossing. And, uh, then the 151 Sam Turner Road. That intersection was identified as part of the 151 corridor study as a high crash, uh, location with, with several safety issues. Um, and then, as I mentioned, we have the, the Route 28, uh, corridor through downtown and up to Oxbow Road. Um, I don't know if I have control of this or someone else that, oh, okay, someone else does. Um, alright, so Route 28 of Palmer Ave. This is the, the Hawk signal. What the Hawk signal is the, it's, um, you've probably seen some of the rapid flashing beacons, which are like the strobe lights for the crosswalk. This is actually more, more of a comprehensive signal that actually, uh, will show a, a red, steady red to the vehicle traffic when people, um, press the, the button to, to cross the street. Uh, it functions basically, it's dark, uh, most when it's not in operation, they press the button, it goes to a flashing yellow and a solid yellow. And then it's actually a double red, similar to like a railroad crossing, solid red signal. Uh, and that's when the walk display comes on. So it's a, the requirement to, to stop. Uh, once the walk period is over and you get that flashing, don't walk, you get a wig wag. So if someone is clear from the crosswalk, the, the traffic can start going if it's safe. Um, the, one of the other advantages, you actually have a walk display facing the, the pedestrians or the bike, bicycles on the path. Uh, so it's, it's more of a traditional, uh, protected crossing. So for this, this, uh, option, again, this is obviously with 28, uh, excuse me, Palmer Ave, and this section is controlled by the state. So we did have to go through the state permitting process. Uh, we're just about wrapping that up. There's a few minor comments that we were still working with. Uh, but the bulk of the design is, is complete and, and it's just an overview here. What we're doing is providing the crossing where, where the path comes out to Palmer Ave. Right now we're putting the signal in. And then we're continuing the path up the hill, uh, to the, the roadway, uh, to access Goodwill Park. Uh, we were originally looking at putting a sidewalk or a path uh, parallel to Palmer Ave going down, but the great, the grade there on the side is, it, it goes up, um, pretty dramatically and would have required, uh, significant construction and retaining walls to, to get the path to, to fit there. Um, so, uh, in terms of this project, we're, we'll be getting the borings with the soil samples to determine the size of the, the foundation to support the, the traffic signal. And once we have that and wrap up the few comments from Mass DOT, it'll be ready for advertising. If we can go to the next. 151 at Sandwich Road. This, this project with, um, been involved this one for, for a number of years. It's, the design has changed a little bit. Uh, basically this is what we're trying to do with this one was to improve the northbound and the, uh, eastbound approaches. Uh, the current configuration on, uh, 151 heading east is you don't have a dedicated left turn lane. Uh, and that, that's causing a lot of traffic to, to back up and, and also result in a number of accidents, both that the turning accidents as well as rear end collisions because of that, that, uh, left turn from the shared lane. So with this, this one, the, as you can see from the, the overview, we're restriping that eastbound approach to provide a dedicated left turn lane, uh, to shadow the, the westbound left turn lane. Uh, and that will get its own signal phase. So you have a protected movement when you make that left turn. As part of the improvements along the northbound approach, right now that approach is basically one wide, uh, approach lane. Again, with the left turns, um, competing for, for use of the lane as, as well as having to wait for a southbound traffic to clear. Uh, and we're restriping that to make, to provide a dedicated left turn lane there. Uh, this project is, is designed, it's ready to go. Uh, it is a, it is a town-owned location, but because 151 was originally constructed with federal funds, we did have to go through a Mass DOT review of, of the, the project to get their, um, to get their blessing to be able to modify it. Uh, again, when we, we're, we're putting out a, a contract with one of the soil, uh, boring companies to do all four of these locations. And once we get that, that's a final detail. We need to basically advertise this one. Go to the next. Jones Road at Gifford. Um, this intersection is, is more in the planning stages, uh, at this point. Uh, we, we have done the survey on it. So we, the concepts we came up with are based on the actual survey. Um, this again is, as I don't have to tell you folks, the, the traffic backups, uh, approaching this intersection are, are beyond acceptable, to say the least. Um, and again, the biggest issue here is you have each, all four approaches are just a single lane. There's no, there's no turn lanes there. So that left turn traffic is, is holding up the rest of the traffic, looking, uh, waiting for gaps to, to make that move. Uh, with this one, again, the idea is to provide a left turn lane, uh, for all the approaches. And again, those left turns, uh, will have their own signal phasing. Uh, and also in, upgrade the pedestrian crossings there. Um, we're anticipating that the, the work can be done within the right of way. There, there will be some, uh, construction. Some of the grades there may involve some retaining walls to, to support the, the widening that we have to do. Um, again, this is, this one is, uh, still the preliminary design we're, we're, uh, presenting here tonight with the, excuse me, with the hope that we'll be completing the actual construction plans, uh, this fall in, into the winter and it'll be ready for advertising sometime in the spring. Go on to the next. The 151 at Sam Turner. It's obviously a, a much more complex intersection. And this, this one, as I said, was identified in the, the 151 corridor uh, study as, as a high crash location. Obviously you've got, um, high speeds out on 151. You've got turns, um, to the side streets, uh, that are, they're occurring from that single lane. And you've got a very odd configuration with the, uh, Sam Turner Road and Bo- Boxbury Hill Road both coming in from the south, all coming into one big wide open intersection. Uh, we looked at a, a number of alternatives and are down to two, one being a roundabout, one being a traffic signal, um, and, and leaning towards the traffic signal. Um, just to quickly give an overview of the, the roundabout. Obviously with the Boxbury Hill Road, we don't have a simple four-way intersection. So it's not a simple, you know, traditional circular roundabout. Uh, so we have to elongate it so we can include Boxbury Hill Road, uh, in, as part of the, the intersection. With the volume of traffic out on 151, uh, we also can't accommodate that with a, just a single lane. So we would have to have basically a, uh, two lanes circulating the majority of the roundabout. With that, one of the critical things with, with any roundabout is to try and slow the speeds of vehicles down before they get into the roundabout. So that's why you see that deflection in the alignment. But that then entails is, uh, it's got pretty significant right-of-way uh, to the north. And that's actually a, uh, uh, article, what's it, um, it's basically protected parkland. So it becomes more of an issue. Uh, we would have to go through the state and legislation to get right-of-way there. So that's one of the biggest detriments to this. In terms of, of cost between this and the, the signal, they're both about the same. Uh, if we can go to the next slide with the, the traffic signal. This is, uh, the design that we, we're hoping to advance. Uh, this is again, more of a traditional intersection, similar to the other, you know, intersections along 151 with the traffic signal. Uh, we would, would be providing, uh, left turn lanes, uh, for, off of 151 to access, uh, Cloverfield, Sam Turner and Boxbury. Uh, the signal will be spread out. So Boxbury will be included in the signal. A couple of the options that we had looked at were, were tightening up the signal, but then you still have Boxbury, you would still have Boxbury Hill Road that would be unsignalized and in close proximity. So it was causing, you know, you weren't really addressing some of the safety issues, uh, there. Uh, this is, in terms of construction, this is a much simpler design. Uh, you can maintain traffic and, and just build widen the road and shift traffic. You don't have to get into the issue of trying to, design and then, uh, construct a, a circular roundabout while maintaining traffic. Uh, the nice part about it is the right-of-way impact has dropped, uh, to about a tenth of the roundabout with about 3,000 square feet of, of right-of-way. And just a, a pretty minimal amount that we could probably even start to design out. Once you get into the final design on that, that, um, parkland, uh, area. And again, the cost is, is in the same range. They're both around that two and a half million dollar mark. Again, this, this will provide upgraded, um, well, new, cause there aren't none out there, pedestrian crossings of, of, uh, 151 with push buttons, wheelchair ramps, crosswalks, um, and, and all the amenities. That's, that's, uh, the Sam Turner. And then go to the next slide. The Route 28 reconstruction. And we know that this, this one is obviously a project that's been, been ongoing for, for quite a while. Uh, we got involved in it, I don't know, probably close to a, a year ago now, uh, to help Peter and Jim kind of with a, a peer review in terms of what's, what Mass DOT would accept for a, a project design on it. As you know, the section of Main Street, the first segment from Locust to Falmouth Heights Road, that's your road. Um, that's downtown. It's, that's really, there's really not much of issues with the current plan there. Um, it's municipally owned and, and the project is primarily just upgrading the wheelchair ramps on the sidewalks and then restriping, um, and resurfacing Main Street itself. So we're not doing really any construction to widen the corridor or, um, change any of the, the, the character of the, the street too much there. If we can go to the segment two, the next one. Uh, so segment two from, segment, segment two and three are under Mass DOT jurisdiction. And uh, this is, that obviously gets into where things get more complicated. Over the last couple of years, Mass DOT is, I'm sure you're, you're aware, has really made a big push to accommodate all users, bike and Peds in particular. And it, any design has to provide those facilities through, uh, bike, dedicated bike facilities as well as, as sidewalks and obviously crossings and so forth. With that, they have different categories of roads and with the volume of traffic and the, the speeds of Route 28, uh, their preferred, their, their preference is really to see the bikes and the Peds physically separated from, um, the, the traffic. So, um, what, with some kind of separation. In the past, we've always just said, it's, you know, an 11-foot traveling with basically a four-foot shoulder, a curb line in the sidewalk. And they, they really want to try and get some more space there. First of all, for the, the bikes, they want to see at least a five-foot usable area for the bikes. And they really want to see some kind of separation from the, the bike shoulder and, and the vehicles. Technically for this, this volume and speed, it should be physically separated with a, a curb. Uh, Mass DOT, particularly District Five, has, has been a little more leaning with that, but they are probably going to require something i- if it's just a, like a two or three foot gourd painted, um, buffer, just to provide that a little extra distance there. This corridor is mostly commercial. So you have a lot of, uh, driveways. The driveway density is particularly, you know, is high along this corridor. So basically the design that was presented, we just have to tweak a little, probably provide a little more buffer for the, for the bikes there and, and just again, work with Mass DOT to, to tweak that section. So it's, it's an acceptable design for them. Uh, if we can go to segment three. So this, this segment is, um, obviously more of a residential. The character changes once you get, um, beyond Old Sandwich Road and that section between Old Sandwich Road and Oxbow Road. And we recognize that there, you know, there was a, a lot of effort put into, uh, the, the cross-section that was presented to Mass DOT, um, and submitted to Mass DOT. Some of the issues though, is that again, it, the, the stand, the design standards that were on that plan just aren't acceptable, uh, in terms of the, the standards, primarily from a safety point of view. The general idea was to provide a, a shared use path on the, I'll say the south side, southeast side. And then a, some kind of facility on the other side of the street. The, the, for a shared use path, you need at least eight feet desirable with 10 feet. And there were sections uh, along both segments where it got down to six feet. So you, you can't call that a bike, a bike, a shared use path. Eight foot is really the minimum they want to see. And there has to be a, again, a separation between, uh, the bike path and the road. The, the, the general concept is, is, um, again, it's just, I think it needs some tweaking, um, to, to make that section work. I don't think we're talking, you know, huge changes. The general concept of a shared use path and sidewalk or, or two shared use paths. Um, is there, one of the nice things is we, we have an opportunity to address additional streetscaping and, and, uh, perhaps provide additional aesthetics, um, along the corridor. There's a significant right-of-way there. And that's one of the biggest things that Mass DOT was commenting on is that because the right-of-way is there, uh, you really can't justify doing a substandard design. Because they, they own the right-of-way and if they own the right-of-way and can physically build it, they can't justify doing something that isn't up to design standards. So that's, that's probably the biggest, um, area. Again, we're just getting involved in these, these projects. We anticipate obviously more public meetings and having Mass DOT involved in those meetings so that they can be aware of the progress that's being made uh, as we go through and, and develop and tweak these, these sections. So that's kind of a very quick, want to keep it quick since it's getting late, just a quick overview of the, the projects that, that we have and be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. And I, you know, I really appreciate that you're, you know, you're, you're well aware of all the work and concern and public input that has gone into that, that section and that it remains sort of a, a hotspot of concern for, um, for the community. So I, I think it's helpful to, um, you know, I'm sure that the folks who are watching feel good that you're really dialed in on that, that, um, it's a very special project to a lot of folks. So, um, any comments or questions from the board? Yes, Doug Jones?
Uh, your last comment on the segment three, concerning the right-of-ways is where I think a lot of the public is going to be concerned. Because they drew the right-of-ways on their property and know that the right-of-way does exist fairly close to some of those houses. And to hear that the, the state may still insist that we get that close to those houses is exactly where all those people came forward. And so to say, oh, it's, it's, the general concept's pretty good. We're going to just tweak it and take advantage of those right-of-ways is actually going to get right back to where we started with the public getting so angry a year and a half ago. And so I'm really concerned that we are heading back in that direction.
Well, just to clarify, I didn't say we're going to take advantage of those right-of-ways. What, what I said is, is the, the state owns the right-of-way. And there, there's certain, there, there are certain areas where there are encroachments, you know, with a wall, a garden, a fence, that type of thing. And the state really can't justify not using that land because someone decided to plant something there. I, I don't, I know people don't want to hear that. Now, if it's something where a bike path would be a foot off of someone's house or impacting the property to a point where, you know, the property isn't usable, that's, that's a different, different story. But if your house is 20 feet back and you've just kind of taken over a section of state right-of-way, that's, that's a reality. When we did, um, Davisville Road, the, the property opposite the new CVS there, the, the shopping center there. They had a physical wall and a sign that was intention on the state right-of-way. State, State Right-of-Way Department, not us, State Right-of-Way Department said, you gotta move that. We'll rebuild it for you, but you gotta move it. So, you know, when we approach these designs, we obviously are trying to, to balance things as, as best we can. But it's, again, it's, it's not us that's saying we're doing it. It's that we've had enough experience with Mass DOT to say, to be able to pretty confidently say, it's their road, they're not going to allow the building until, unless it meets a certain level of, of standards. And, and that's, that's the issue we're having now. That's, that's why we're at where we are now. Because Mass DOT wasn't really involved in that planning process. Because Mass DOT wasn't really involved in that planning process. I've I've worked with the folks at District Five for twenty plus years. And they're reasonable folks, and if you if you have an option, you know, that in some of those areas where things may be um you know, I don't want to say limited right of way, but a perceived limited right of way. Um, you know, there may be things we can do that, you know, maybe you take a little off the shoulder or you you do something here or there. And and you, you know, we're just starting this, we're just uh looking at this from a, you know, thirty thousand foot level right now, we're not at the point where we're looking at individual properties and individual impacts. I mean, if there's a thirty foot retaining line from there, obviously that's, you know, that because it drops off to a wetland area, I mean, that's that's something that you're not going to probably change. But I mean, it's it's different levels that we have to look through as we go through the quarter to really identify what areas can we kind of be creative with and what areas are just not acceptable.
Peter, I saw you had your hand up as well, and then Doug Brown.
Yeah, I I just wanted to to mention, John, John and I have had uh conversations on this um over the over the past year, um several conversations on this with the right of way, so I I think one of the big, the big items with the right of way is the original design had a reconstruction of the uh Maravista intersection. And that that actually, some of those residents in those those areas with that expansion of the extra lane and the left turn lane, that actually did bring the property line right out to the edge of the um the right of way, and it brought it basically right into almost the front yards of the residence perceived into their front grass area. That intersection has been taken out of the design, so that's that's no longer, so um and and I think that John had mentioned is the 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 base design is a good design, it just needs to be tweaked. If we have to go from six feet to eight feet to bring back a um a bike path, uh if we have to put another couple of feet to 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 do a buffer area, you you're talking, you know, you you you're probably not going to be talking twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet, you're going to be talking several feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but we're going to be, you might be talking four to five feet in some of the areas, and I think with attending, I I basically attended all of those meetings with the uh with the committee, the transportation, excuse me, committee group. Um, I I I think there is, there there's going to be some middle bounds there that we'll be able to um, that we'll be able to reach. I honestly don't.
Thank you. Um Doug Brown?
Well, this tight uh constraint in some of the areas is really the reason why I was really interested in pursuing the underground utilities, because I feel like if we're sharing all, pushing all of the uh expansion to the uh south side, I think those residents are being unduly affected. Are we planning on moving uh utility poles to accommodate the the widening?
Um, obviously, we'll have to look at that. I would imagine some of the poles will have to be relocated. One of the, one of the advantages of providing a buffer between the the roadway and the the shared use path is that you have a place to put those those poles now. Undergrounding for for any project we do always comes up, and you're talking millions of dollars of of effort um to to do something like that. For the the physical-
That's what they've been telling us.
What's that?
I know, that's what they've been telling us.
I it's, I mean, it's, if we could, the other thing that to to keep in mind is if you underground the utilities, the the overhead wires, you still have streetlights, so you still have poles. So you still have looped street lighting for the pedestrians, for the vehicles, uh you know, for the intersections themselves. Uh so you're still going to have a physical pole there, you're just not going to have the the wires, so from an aesthetic point of view, it it it's a huge improvement, but from having to still have that pole located somewhere, you're still going to have a pole. So it's, it's really more of an aesthetic thing, and then you you end up having to figure out how you're going to all all the service connections to all the properties have to be redone because all those have to go underground now, and that becomes a, you know, who pays for that? You raise rates and get this a whole other.
I know, you you're just one of several people that's tried to talk for a couple of years now.
Breaking up a little bit, but basically Doug-
I just want to say, I I don't want us to be constrained, pushing all onto one side. If we're not successful.
And and ju- and again, we haven't really got into, you know, thoroughly evaluating the design. You know, in in general, for any road project like this, we we generally don't just widen to one side, we generally will try and and minimize the the impacts to, you know, to be fair to both both properties. Uh sometimes you you can't avoid, you have to shift to one side or the other, because like I say, if you have, you know, a retaining wall or wetlands or or that type of you know, that type of situation where you it's more of an impact and more of a a cost and more of a detriment in general to to widen there, then we do have to look at shifting, but I mean, in general, something like this, we're we're basically talking about, you know, again, I don't know the exact number, but you know, five feet on each side if we need ten feet, that's that's kind of how we would approach it.
That's that's all I'm looking for, is try to share the pain.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Peter?
Yeah, i- if we could just get a a little bit of guidance, um especially, I mean, the other projects that John had talked about, those are in the concept. But for this uh um Main Street and the reconstruction, um this has been going on for quite a while, it got stalled, it got delayed, it went back, we got the committee together, went to the state. So um either working through the selectman, working with Julian, town manager, to see maybe we can uh reach out at some point in time, probably get this group back together for at least, maybe there might be a meeting or two to get the group back together, just to go over what the options are. We can just get some guidance on-
Yes. Yep, so we can think about um, you know, I think if you're looking for that that input now that we're a little bit more sort of focused um with this this information, this input, what is this board's feeling about getting that particular group of people back together? What is, what's the pleasure of this board?
Well, we now have this uh transportation group that's supposed to pick up the ball and carry on, right? So I would think that we would go to that, and then the members of that group can come back and and comment.
And that, and the transportation committee would get um the final presentation that that group put together and and presented to us, because I think it was very informative. Does the board feel comfortable with that? Because they would be holding open, they would be hoping, holding, excuse me, public meetings anyway, so presumably, anyone who wants to weigh in on that issue could do so. Does that make sense to you, Peter?
Yep, yep, that would work.
Sam?
Yeah, I just don't want to push the work that's been done aside, because I think you kind of distilled a lot of the positions of a lot of people that had interest along that T ticket highway piece there, and you know, I I sort of feel like we ought to respect that and make sure that they're sort of leading this. It's okay to ask for additional input, but they resolved an awful lot of issues. And I know there's some tweaking in the design that John has just mentioned. But I'd like to see that committee weigh in on it first, because they're the ones that really kind of worked out the sort of the compromises. And why go back, start all that all over again? You know, why not use the wisdom of the people who've already been working on that problem?
I mean, I'm comfortable with whatever the board feels they'd like to do. If we'd like to reach out to those members of that committee and ask them to um um, I guess we would reappoint them or whatever we would do, just their work isn't done yet, so um they would continue to work with Peter um and John on this particular, as you know, just to finalize this piece as we go forward. Is that? Um Jul- Julian, Doug Brown, Doug Jones, Julian, go ahead.
I'm just saying, I'm not disrespecting the work of the group, I think they did an excellent job, and I certainly appreciate it. They are disbanded now, and we are appointing this transportation committee, I mean, it just seemed like it would be easier to facilitate, and those other folks can come over to the meeting and comment, and I mean, I just thought it would be easier, but whatever the board wants to do.
Okay, Doug Jones?
Uh I guess I would leave this in Julian's hands uh to call those people together. I wouldn't reestablish the committee, so I wouldn't make it a a select board appointed committee. I think if Julian and Peter McConity wanted to pull them together as sort of their, their, I know they've already had their wrap up meeting, but just get their input and then hand everything over to our new transportation committee.
Okay, Julian? Yep, go ahead, Julian.
Yeah, we're certainly happy to do that.
There you go.
Yeah, be happy to work with uh Peter McConity along the lines that Doug Jones just suggested and at least do a an outreach to that citizens group to work so steadfastly with many of us, Peter was heavily involved as well, and um, you know, recognize that, and then uh we can hand it off to the transportation management group, which is going to uh be having their first organizational meeting uh later this month. Just a reminder, though, to the board that uh that citizens committee was only involved with segment three, not with segment one or two, so that whole T ticket area, for instance, was not um within the purview of that citizens committee. Uh certainly, all that information was shared, but the 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 planning and the discussions were in the segment three area uh from Old Sandwich Road to Oxbow Road, so just wanted to underscore that as well.
Yeah, great point, Julian, but I think I I think that's exactly why um the hybrid that you're kind of talking about and Doug Jones is talking about works well. Meaning, get sort of that group of people together, have them weigh in on any final pieces, and then handing that over to the transportation committee that can look at and and give us some guidance and answers and movement forward on the whole package, because I under, I hear what Peter is saying, we've been, you know, really ruminating and working through this process for a while, and the goal is to try and and advance it. Um so I think using that that, you know, hybrid of bringing together those folks and then in including the transportation committee would be um would work well. So unless there's any other questions or comments?
Uh just, I have one more comment about the uh Boxbury Hill um one fifty one intersection. I know Mr. Diaz mentioned during his presentation that he feels like they're leaning toward the uh stoplight rather than the rotary. And if we do end up going back to the rotary, I hope it's not an oval like what's drawn, because I've got a lot of uh trips around that Curly Boulevard oval rotary, and I find it to be problematic where it almost feels like the road is just continuing and you have the right of way, where all the people that are already on the rotary have to make an abrupt stop or, you know, to try to, it's just confusing to people. And I I think if it's going to be a roundabout or rotary, it should maybe be round so people know what they're heading into, because those oval shaped ones just seem prone to accidents, just might not.
Yeah, and just just to comment on on that, again, that's that's part of the reason we we generally prefer the the signal for this location. Um it's it's not really a standard designed round um, you know, circular roundabout. The only way we could accomplish something like that is if we the um cut off or relocated Boxbury Hill Road, so-
Right, right.
Which, which again, would be, you know, a significant impact where we can come up with another design, be that being the signal that accommodates the, you know, keeps full access for Boxbury. Again, I should should note on that's that section, again, it's your road, it's it's owned by the town, but again, we do have to go through Mass DOT for for um approval of the change there, because it was originally funded with uh federal monies, so they will have to review uh and have input on what that design looks like.
I was all for the rotary till I saw the oval shape.
Yeah.
And it doesn't slow, that that's that speed is such a factor in that area and has been such a cause of so many very serious and and sometimes fatal accidents there, so uh thank you so much, it was really helpful to see, and we definitely, um Julian, you'll move forward with contacting those folks so that we can um start to just make the progress we need to make.
Certainly, we'll team up to do that.
Okay.
Great. Great, thank you. Excellent. Um now, we're going to vote to approve closure of additional portions of Great Bay Street. Jim, Peter, who wants to present for this? Thank you, Mr. Diaz, we appreciate it. Peter?
Yeah, I I can um, I can present for this, uh thank you very much. This is um, as many of you know, um with with the selectmen, this has been brought through the select board several times over the past seven, eight years. Um and this recently, uh last fall, I was approached by several of the abutters to ask to um close additional sections of Great Bay, Great Bay Street. Um I had a letter that was sent to me, signed by the uh all the 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 abutters, there was there's six abutters, I believe, actually, now there's seven abutters that were on the roadway. Um so the process that I've been taking with the with the with the first, second, and this is the third um set of closures is is uh I would take the request and then I would talk to the uh residents, I'd talk to the abutters, and then I would send an email out to the fire chief and the police chief before we even move any further, to get their comments, to make sure that there'd be no concerns on their part. As everyone knows, on Maravista, there's a lot of one-way streets, you got to back on, mostly on the west side, you got to back out of some of the roads. It kind of makes it a little bit tough with some of the uh fire apparatus, but I did hear back from um from police chief and fire chief that they did not have any concerns of this additional um additional closures to the roadways. So if I could just have the um the um presentation be brought up? Thank you. Yeah, next next slide, please. So so Great Bay Street, um basically, it runs from uh Chestnut Street down to Monah. The total roadway length is six thousand uh eight hundred and thirty feet, so it's a little over a mile, almost a mile and an eighth long. If I could get the next slide. And uh exactly about one point three miles, you'll see on this area, um I'll get into it in the next couple of slides. There's some blue areas, there's some green areas and some red areas, so back in twenty thirteen, back in twenty fourteen, we went through a first set, and then back in twenty seventeen, went through a second set. There are some sections of the roadway that cannot be closed because there's drive, there's driveways on Great Bay Street. I I believe there's several residences that um have that um situation, and this request also has uh several driveways on it, so we would not be able to put boulders at the end of all the roadways. It would, we would have one-way signs at the, on Maravista, but uh we would not be able to put boulders in there because there, people would need to get to the driveways. So if I could have the next slide, please. So back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we closed uh eight sections of roadway. Uh most of it was on the the uh northerly section of uh Great Bay Street, Oak Street, Harrington, Randolph to Harrington, Montauk to Cypress, Aricoise, Toledo, Reynolds, Hiawatha, and Harmony. And most of those areas had really high banks in the areas, the erosion on the banks, and they had high banks in the area to great, to great uh, to great pond. And there was a lot of erosion and that was happening, we're getting trash trucks, we're getting delivery trucks, we're getting oil trucks, and we were getting people that just drove down the roads as a cut through if Maravista was busy. So we looked to close those. So back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we closed eight sections of roadway. Um next slide. Back in in twenty eighteen, I came to the board again for another seven sections, for this was the midsection of Great Bay Street, Philadelphia, Bourne, Cedar, Maple, Providence, Massasoiliet, and and Boston Street was the last one. And once again, most of those areas had uh boulders, rocks and boulders put at the end of the areas to block the end of the roadways, some of them they couldn't be because driveways had to be accessed. But it's been the typical format and the typical, what we've been working after the design for closing the roadways. Um and we make sure that all the residences are on board uh when we're doing this, and like I say, with this request, it was brought to, brought to me from the uh, from the residents. I gotta get the next slide, please. So this is the actual section that we're looking at, this is um Brockton Street. Anyone that's driven down Brockton Street down to the end of Brockton Street going towards Great Bay, there's a public landing there, it's mostly for canoes, people want to get out in paddle boards. Um there's a little small dirt parking area that they can um pull up to, pull the vehicles and and get onto the beach with their uh whatever it is that they're um going to use and be able to access the water. This area is just south of that uh access point, of that public access. So Brockton Street would re- remain unaffected, but Great Bay Street would be blocked at Brockton Street. And it would also be blocked about a hundred and fifty feet down towards the Admore Street. And the reason only a hundred and fifty feet down and not at the intersection is there's a driveway there, if you drove down, there's a driveway there that need to be uh, that needs to be accessed. The residents had mentioned that they have no problem coming down Admore Street and and um getting into their driveway, that area- getting into their driveway that area. Then the next section of roadway would be from Admore to Fenton, and then from Fenton to Sycamore. And once again, there's a driveway in between Sycamore and Fenton. Um, and then the last section was, um, uh, Sycamore, Potomac, and down to put boulders at Monot Road to block. So basically, it would be blocked from the little entrance there at Monot Road all the way up to, um, Brockton Street. So tho- those are the latest, those are the, would be the latest, um, process, and and most of it is the roadway does get overgrown, but the roadway needs to be graded. There's some potholes on that roadway that get very deep. Public Works has been in over the last several years and have, uh, filled them in and, um, ingrated the area out with the vehicles going back down there. They opened back up again. Um, there is erosion, uh, problems going on on the side of the side of the roadway, so, um, basically, to be the same as the rest of the roadway, um, they they requested to have this closure done. So at this point, there are not too many areas of that roadway that are open. The only areas on that roadway that are open is because they can't be closed down because of, um, there's driveways that need to be accessed. So this request would basically finish off Great Bay Street from, um, Massasoit all the way up to Chestnut. And this area would be Massa, uh, excuse me, would be Monot up to Chestnut. This area would be from Monot to Brockton. And I do believe that, um, I have been talking with the, uh, with the residents and emailing back and forth, and I do believe that they, um, they are in the waiting room in the audience tonight, so they they might be sending some chat areas. I didn't know if they had any addition that they also wanted to to add, but that's basically the gist of the, um, the gist of the presentation to see if we can close that section of Great Bay Street.
Great, thank you, Peter. So if any folks are participating, please send a message if you are, um, or let us know if you'd like to weigh in while we are, um, using the chat function while we are sitting here. Any questions for Peter?
I would move that we proceed with the plan that Peter's presented.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, by roll call, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much, Peter. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Sorry for the late night. Um, so the next, um, the next two issues, really, um, and we actually will have to do this with the, um, Edward Marx Building Committee as well at some point, but obviously, because of COVID, some of these groups that had, um, deadlines and and term periods, um, we we have to extend them out if this board wishes to do so, because they obviously had an enormous pause in their ability to do work. So the first is an extension of the term ending date for the Coastal Residency Action Committee. And I believe it is scheduled to end. Can someone just remind, does someone have the date on hand?
I think it ended in June.
Right, so we need to pick a date to extend it out. Um, they are still, I know I've spoken to Charlie McCaffrey. I mean, they're still working, and they know they have a report they're supposed to give us. They're working very hard to try to continue to be on time with that, but clearly, they haven't been able, they weren't able to meet as a committee for months. Uh, yes, Julian?
Madam Chair and members of the board, I think the suggestion is that you consider extending it to the end of October. Um, October 30th is a Friday, and I think both the, both committees, uh, would consider that if it would be the desire of the board.
Okay.
Go move, Patterson.
Okay, so this is going to be for both Coastal Residency and Fire Station Location Committee to end till October 30th, 2020. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Taylor, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, by roll call, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
And Mr. Suso, could we put the Eddie Marx, um, group on our next agenda to do the same?
Certainly happy to do so.
Thank you. Okay.
They're going to give us a scary report. It should come on Halloween.
That's true. Maybe set ourselves up. Um, individual selectmen reports. Um, I just want to start with one thing. The, um, the school committee is going to have in September, they're going to bring in a presenter to talk about race, um, racism, racial inequality, and they had, they were planning on doing that for the for the school department, but they reached out um, uh, to us to see if it's something that we would like to participate in. So it's really not, you know, racism isn't just simply um, confined to our schools, um, and so they were looking for a collaborative event. Uh, I don't think, I'm just going to check, we didn't have an exact date yet. Let me just make sure that that's true. Uh, the Chair, Kelly Welch, sent, it looks like it's just some, a date in September. So there, they do have a a possible speaker, and I wanted to just ascertain from this board if that's something, um, that this board would be interested in having a joint meeting to, um, really have a presentation done for us, um, along with the school committee.
Be interested.
I would be interested.
Okay, great. Great, excellent. We don't need to vote on it. I just, I, my feeling was that this, that was the, would be the sentiment of the board, but obviously, I wanted to make sure uh, we spoke about it. So I will get back to her, and then we can, um, we can move forward on details with that. Um, had another announcement, but it's by mine, so let's go for, Sam, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, two things. Um, you mentioned the school committee. I actually, you know, listened to their Zoom. They're, of course, still trying to deal with opening school in September. Uh, they're sort of waiting for additional guidance from the state, and the state has been hedging. Of course, there's a lot of uncertainty as to where we're going to be, but, uh, that's, that's a struggle that they're having. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention was I was uh, recruited to actually do drawings for the affordable housing units, um, on Spring Bar's Road, which should be completed somewhere in the next three months. And it was very interesting, because I was drawing out over 150 names. It's kind of hard to believe, but they're categorized in different groups. All of them have been pre-uh, qualified, if you will, although some will be further screened later on, should their, should their name come up, and uh, I had to keep telling myself, remember that you're dealing with the hopes and dreams and needs of real people, even though I'm pulling out little slips of paper with numbers on them, but it was nice to be able to participate in that. There were, you know, a monitoring agent, and then a lottery administrating agent, and then Linda Clark there for the Falmouth Housing Corporation, but it's just nice to see that project moving along. We're really looking at, over the next year, we may actually see, uh, 60 housing units, affordable housing units suddenly become available to the town, and these are all rentals. Um, but that is where the greatest need is, according to our housing production plan.
That's it. Great, thank you. Thank you, Sam, and thank you for, uh, participating that, in that drawing. That's, um, you know, really, I know it's something that this, that this board, we hear about all these projects, and then it's wonderful to actually see things coming to fruition and and real people, as you said, being able to start planning for a future with, um, uh, you know, with just housing that is secure and appropriate, so.
Yeah, the disappointing side, of course, is that there are an awful lot of people that will not get one of those units, um,
Yes.
that have a need. And I, and I would say that just from residents of Falmouth, there were over 60 people that applied for those units, so the need is great, uh, and you really do see it when you participate in an event like this. And they're all, as I said, they were all pre-qualified, so screened in that regard as being
Ready for it.
for the rents that were available.
Yep, thank you. Um, any other reports from folks? Go ahead, Doug, Jones?
Uh, just briefly, Julie and I met with representatives from the Steamship Authority dealing with the lease on the parking lot down in its hole, and will likely get a report for a one-year extension coming from, uh, Frank Duffy and from their lawyer.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing major. I got my first, uh, assembly meeting on Wednesday. I discussed solar lease that they've been working on, because, uh, there were some legal issues, and it's a light agenda, because it's Charter Review Committee is meeting also, so they're doing a similar charter review as we did last year.
Oh, great, you just got in right in time. Sam, go ahead.
Well, Doug brought up the fact that he's working at the county level. Well, I got drafted to be on the executive board for the Cape Cod and Islands Selectment and Counselors Association Group, and, uh, met with them la- this past Friday, uh, and sort of scheduling out meetings over the next six months, uh, and, uh, already, they're going to be asking, uh, uh, Superintendent Deuer and all, and another superintendent, probably, um, I'm sorry, the Superintendent of the of Barstool Schools, uh, to come and give a presentation on where our schools sit in terms of trying to educate children under the pall of the COVID-19 issues and the health issues associated with it. And then there'll be others coming up, but I'll, I'll try to give you a heads up as to what the topics are, uh, you know, a month ahead, that if you want to come in. Well, if you, if you want to zoom in and hear the presentation, it's going to be like that, of course, for quite some time. Um, but, uh, it's an interesting group, and it's nice to hear the the perspectives of of similar kinds of civic leaders all across the Cape.
That's great. Thank you, Sam. That's wonderful. Thank you for for stepping forward to do that.
The other thing, um, I think
Oh, go ahead.
Long-range task force is coming together, uh, for the, uh, Steamship Authority, so I've heard that they're meeting, uh, I mean, that they're, uh, filling the slots on that committee, so I think we're going to be meeting soon.
Great, and just to, um, let people know, coming up on our August 10th meeting, we'll be hearing from the Charter Review Committee, hear, um, from Falmouth with those articles that we had um, with their recommendations that we had put over, so we do anticipate having some more feedback from them and having a conversation with them um, as we still have some unfinished, um, business with them from the work that they've done. So that should be on August 10th. Excuse me, Mr. Suso, Town Managers' Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just to confirm, our transition work in Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices continues in furtherance of modest adjustments uh, to encourage and facilitate social distancing in all offices and protection of both town employees and the general public as well. These actions are all consistent with the evolving emergency orders of Governor Baker and CDC guidelines, so that is, continues to be a work in progress. The board's next regular business meeting is set for Monday, July 27th. And, uh, my understanding is that, uh, as was noted, I think earlier in the meeting, um, August 17th is our, uh, apparent date for the Strategic Plan Retreat rescheduling. And I also understand, uh, that Saturday, July 25th, uh, is the date set for morning graduation for, uh, Falmouth High School. So we congratulate all the graduates and, uh, wish everyone well in that, uh, long-awaited ceremony. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, do I have a second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
You called Taylor. She was just.
I didn't hear. Taylor, aye.
Have to read the lips. Good night.
Night, guys.
Night, thanks, everybody.